I'd open the conservation meeting for Thursday, October 19, 2023. Meeting opens at 7:00 PM at the Old Town Hall. This meeting is in video and audio recording for cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov and YouTube. Would everyone stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is to review the minutes. There are a couple discrepancies, so what we're gonna do is postpone the accepting of the minutes until our next meeting, which is actually going to be at 4:30 on Wednesday this coming week.
October 25th.
October 25th.
Would you like a motion to table?
Yes, please.
I'd like to propose a motion to table the approval of the minutes until our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. We have DI Trust Comprehensive Conservation Subdivision. They have requested a continuance to our November 16 meeting.
Motion to continue to 111623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have Reed Brothers, limited liability, and Outback Engineering has requested a continuance to November 16, 2023.
Motion to continue, 111623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an Enrad application by Dean Smith of New Leaf. That's a Dighton Energy Storage up on Mained Lane. New Leaf has requested a continuance to our November 16 meeting.
Motion to continue to 111623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An Enrad application by R.J.R. Properties, Zero Horton Street. ESI has requested this be tabled until November 16, 2023.
Motion to continue to 111623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You have a notice of intent application by Robert J. Russell III at Zero Horton Street. ADE has requested a continuance to November 16, 2023.
Motion to continue to 111623.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. You have a notice of intent by the town of Dighton for drainage improvements along the Hart Street roadway. Work includes improvement of existing drainage ditch between 578 and 620 Hart Street through the creation of a grass swale and the addition of check dams, roadside birmingham, and a BMP device to treat stormwater runoff. A portion of the project is within the buffer zone to regulate wetland resources. They have a file number of SE17-488.
My name is Tyler Drew with Beta Group.
Sorry?
My name is Tyler Drew with Beta Group. And I'm here to present the Hart Street Drainage Improvements Project.
Okay.
So like you said, we're proposing to improve an existing grass swale along Hart Street. Improvements generally include regrading, installation of a stone diaphragm along the roadway, stone check dams, and other improvements to treat stormwater runoff before they exit into the stream down gradient from the swale.
How long is this improvement in linear feet?
I don't know.
I have the addresses here, but I'm just looking at the length of the...
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Are you talking about the length that's next to the wetland or?
No, the...
The whole length?
The work that's going to be done, it's a long Hart Street.
It's a long ways. The street has an awful, awful, awful swale.
Yeah.
It needs to get improved bad. There was a dump truck.
But I'm looking, I asked him how long this project is. The linear footage of the drainage improvements.
Yeah, I'm not sure unfortunately.
Well, can you give me an estimate?
Maybe a couple hundred, a few hundred feet?
I'm sorry?
A few hundred feet?
Okay.
How much was that?
A few hundred feet.
So stopping at the vernal pool, correct?
Well before the vernal pool, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So yeah, we delineated the site. There's a vernal pool with a BVW. This is actually all up gradient of the site, so this all drains through a stream to the culvert, down gradient of the site again, and across the street into a farm pond. So the site is proposing improvements to the swale up gradient on the opposite side of the stream to continue us all the way up.
In this process, I assume that you're going to do some digging or trenching, whatever the proper word is, to make a clear water weight as it travels downstream?
Mm-hmm.
Am I using the right word, downhill?
Yeah.
When that is being completed, what kind, are you gonna be using a netting or turf to control it? Because when you dig that out, it's going to leave bare ground again, and I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see what, see this same thing happen, what has happened in the past.
I understand. So the exact methods are usually up to the contractor. I'm not sure exactly, but I know typically they're stabilized during construction with either core fabric or core logs, although it's kind of small, it's a small four-foot wide channel. So I'm not sure what exactly they're gonna end up using, but...
Okay, well, you know...
There's no matting.
We have the CS here.
Oh, there's this matting on this side? Erosion control barrier, straw waddle, waddle?
Yeah. Oh, so that's what I... Yeah, so down gradient of the swale.
So there's no mesh in the swale itself after installation to protect?
No, not after installation, no. Just during, during the construction process. But down gradient of the swale is an erosion control barrier that will separate the project from the culvert downstream, or down gradient.
So can we use something other than straw waddles? Because I never recognize them. Yeah, we usually do the core logs.
Yeah, core logs are what we typically suggest, okay.
Because there's straw bottles on this, but...
Okay.
If I mistake.
And then what are the check dams gonna come from? What are they gonna be made of?
Stone?
Stone check dams?
Mm-hmm.
So are they gonna be like gabions or are they, are they just gonna be stone? Or are they gonna be actually like, have like an outer barrier to hold the stone in?
I'm not sure on the details of the, just the check dams themselves, no.
So far, I'm hearing, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Stone check dams.
I would, I would like to hear clear cut what you're going to do. Are you gonna put netting? Are you gonna put turf? Are you going to put, you know, what is it that you're actually gonna do?
So it's, the, the project, the final product would be grass, return to, to grass.
When would this take place?
Again, I don't know. The, the, as soon as possible.
It's in the what?
As soon as possible.
So how are you gonna get grass at this time of year?
You can still get it. You've still got plenty of time. If they start it now.
He's optimistic.
Sorry?
He's very optimistic.
I know, very optimistic.
I've done it before. You can get grass starting now.
But they haven't even, they, it's, nothing is gonna happen. If we were to give approval tonight...
They're doing the project this winter.
If we were to give approval tonight, they would not be able to get started for another month.
Right, because of the orders, yeah.
So now we're talking mid-November, and, and at that time, nothing's gonna grow, and then all you're gonna do is get more erosion going into the neighbors' pond across the street and into the vernal pool. And I don't wanna see that.
Tom would be here to answer some of those specific questions.
Yeah. Those, so as far as protection during the construction process, like I said, it's gonna be separated from the stream, so there, there is gonna be some sedimentation, you know, barriers between that and the stream. As far as the vernal pool, that is all up gradient of the site. The, the stream coming out of the BVW and the swale itself meet at a low point and then cross into the street through a culvert. So that is all up gradient.
Up gradient.
The vernal pool is up gradient?
Yes.
The vernal pool is at the base of, of, of...
Where is this pool?
This drainage trench.
Can you point to the pool?
Yeah.
And to the culvert going up?
So this is the BVW, the certified vernal pool.
Yep.
So the stream drains down to the culvert here, under the, there's a culvert under the driveway, daylight's here, and then...
Point to the farm pond, farming.
Yeah, it's right here. Here's the project location.
The pond is down here.
Yeah, the project location is up gradient. Well, actually, it's...
He said the pool was up gradient. It's not.
No, the pool is down gradient.
The...
The vernal pool is down gradient, because the road slopes down towards this pool. So this is your, this is what you've submitted.
Mm-hmm.
So this is the project area, and it goes from pretty much all in front of Mr. Frenat's house, right? Yep. I said it goes, the entire project is the length of, in front of your farm.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's, there's four house lots on 175 feet frontage.
Yeah.
This project goes five, so... Okay, so we're talking about 700 linear foot. 75 times four. Yeah, so we're talking about 700 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe 800. But this project, just to clarify, is up gradient at the pool.
The project is up gradient, yes. They both drain towards this culvert in the center, is what I'm trying to say. So there isn't any discharge, you know, from the base of the project.
So the only erosion that I see from this design here, that could, that, depending on how far up the hill you go into the properties, the only, how far past your swell do you guys plan on touching? Because that is the only exposed dirt that's lumen seed on this print. Because from the roadway, it goes from roadway, crushstone, a peystone, crushstone, bottom of the, bottom of the swell. So you're only gonna have, depending on what this scales out to, this will be your only exposed soil. So I'm just wondering, how far past the roadway do you guys plan on touching?
The only exposed soil would be north of the project area.
Everything...
Yeah, along the, the fieldstone walls there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would all be stabilized. So excavation, I think...
So if that's all you're touching, you'd only have, there's the wall, there's the road. So depending on what you expose, you're talking five, six feet?
Past the swell?
Past, back edge of the swale to where it stops is what you'd have exposed.
578 to 620.
I think it's quite that much, but yeah, there would be...
Right. Is that what I'm seeing? That's the only exposed stuff?
From 578 to 620.
I don't see that being as awful, as long as they can maintain it with some sort of stabilization matting.
If it has to be done this winter, I mean, we would just have to work with Tom Ferry on determining if that's...
Forcing stabilization?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, some, some sort of core fabric. Like I said, that's typically what they use.
I almost think this is gonna be 10 times better than what's happening out there right now, even if they open it all up and put the erosion controls down.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, would using a turf, of course turf, you're not gonna get, it's just gonna be grass.
You'll kill turf.
That would be instantaneous covering and preventing erosion.
So what you're gonna have, what you see here is what? Is the only thing you're gonna have exposed. You got four inches of lumen seed. They don't plan on touching past here. Here's all the stone walls. So only thing you'll have exposed is this. All the runoff is coming from the road to here. Stone wall is gonna stop any erosion coming down the hill.
Well, that's what we thought in the past.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I don't see water pouring through a stone wall as long as they can somewhat stabilize this footage. There's not gonna be much runoff coming past this.
Okay. All this here is uphill.
Yep.
Yep.
These houses are, and I'm using, I'm using this right here. This land goes like this, and, and there's one, two, three houses, four houses, well, this one probably not so much, but all that is, is a steep gradient.
There's heavy vegetation at this edge.
Hasn't stopped in the past. This has given us a lot of headaches, and I do not wanna open up another headache for Mr. Frenat.
Okay.
That's why, that's why I'm really concerned about, about making sure that when it's done, it's done quickly, and it's, it has a mat of some sort to prevent anything from eroding, and then whether it's, whether it's some kind of a juke mat or, or something, because that is, every one of those houses has, has been contentious for us.
Do you have an estimate time on completion?
And how long the project is gonna be?
Yeah, how long would this take you?
No, I, I don't know. That's a question for the town. I just, all I know is that it's supposed to be done ASAP to address the issue, and it's a limited, you know, limited area, so there's not a lot of like excavation to be done. It was, you know, supposed to get in and out.
It's gonna just clean the swale, add the bottom.
Resurface it.
Yeah, exactly.
Add the bottom, make it meet the lip, so as minimal as possible on the backside.
Yeah, yeah, regrading along. There's a couple of sections that need regrading.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so you are in the design of it only. You are not in the actual making of the swale and doing the work.
Right. So you did prepare straw wall report and checklist, correct? And is redevelopment?
Yes.
I have to ask too, did the legal ad get paid?
Yeah, I forwarded that to you yesterday, yeah.
I did a lot of these.
That's okay.
So none of it's in a flood zone, correct?
That is correct.
No flood zone?
Yeah, no, well, not, not at that angle.
No rare species, wow, the vernal pool.
Yeah, let's head from that. Let's head from that now.
We'll open it up to audience in, in a while.
We may be better off doing it this time of year than waiting till the spring. Kind of a sensitive time to be messing with areas around a vernal pool.
In the spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, yeah. I understand what you're saying. Do you have any questions?
Is this gonna be done by the town, highway department?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't know that. Tom will take his precautionary measures.
I don't know where Tom is. Is he golfing?
I, I'm, I don't know.
Probably dragging a deer out of one.
Yep.
If this, if this project is somewhat of an as-built, and if they do this in sections, they install their stone barriers, they should be able to control this coming down through.
Yeah.
In other words, don't open it all up. If they figure like so many feet, do it.
Yeah.
Segment, so it would limit the, the amount of open space.
Yeah.
Or to know they can finish when they start if the weather changes.
This basically gym is gonna be an as-built by the sounds of it. They're gonna clean out what's there, straighten it out, where they're gonna flatten the bottom, curb the bottom, do whatever, but if they do it in small sections, and when they put the, and when they put the stone retainers in, if they fabric it, fabric, put fabric down low, and then the stones, that should control, you put some waddles in there, whatever, that'll control it, and just have them seeded as they go along. So if you put in something quick like winter rye...
Or some, or netting even to, to hold, you know, and the seed, and the seed will go through the netting.
Some of the new fabrics they got will hold it, but if they put winter rye in a grass mix, it should catch, because the project on Middle Street, right there at the end of Middle Street where they cleared that lot, that was seeded less than a week ago, and it's already showing green, so, you know, I mean, if this goes through, and they just limit the work, small section at a time.
Just in experience with dealing with the DPW, I feel like they're, Tom really keeps a good eye on these things, so I think we can condition it so that they do set, they don't try to do the whole project at once.
So, well, also, if he determines the, how long it's gonna take, and then look at the future cast.
So I can stay, from the standpoint of knowing how these processes take to, to build these, staging the process might tamper with procedural. If you bring an excavator on site and you need to dig the whole swale, you don't wanna dig it, bring it back, get one bucket of stone, put one bucket of stone. As long as they can promise that it's stable, and whatever measures, I think would be the best bet, because procedurally you might hinder production and run the number up higher than it should. I understand protecting the conservation aspect is very important, but putting that contingent might hamper, hinder the performance, and might put a real tight squeeze on production, slowing them down even worse.
Okay.
Good point. I, I can work with Mr. Ferry and draft additions, and before you guys sign, I'll make sure that there's something...
You can see where our concerns are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did anyone else have any?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for? Okay, Tony, I saw your hand up first.
Most frequent passerby on Hart Street, my business is on there. Sounds to me like you guys are putting a band-aid on a problem that's been ongoing for years on that street. First of all, the street's too narrow.
The what?
The street is too narrow.
We're not proposing it, we're just reviewing it. The DPW is proposing it.
I'm just trying to address when you presented to the public next.
We didn't present it. Beta presented it for the DPW.
You're just approving the work next to the wetlands.
Well, I gotta take on the vernal pool. The vernal pool is, is a big problem feeding that stream. When it, when it floods over, that vernal pool floods over, it comes up to the edge of the street.
Well, I think they're gonna clean out the culvert so that it doesn't happen anymore, because right now the culvert's all clogged up, correct?
Yeah, well, the point of the project is to address the, the sedimentation that's being discharged into the stream, the culvert, and, and the swale there, to, yeah, so that would reduce the amount of sediment and, and help free up the culvert, yeah.
To me, they oughta do it all at once. Why have to come back a year and still got the problem? That vernal pool's still feeding that, that culvert that's going across the street into his property.
Well, if we conditioned it at all, it was, it would just be like, you know, a few weeks on this segment, a few weeks on that segment, but I'm gonna work with Mr. Ferry, I'm sure he can make sure it gets done right.
I'd like to see it corrected, you know, once and for all.
Yeah.
That vernal pool needs to be addressed.
Okay, Bill?
I want to go up there so you can...
Certainly.
And I haven't had a chance to look at the map. That swale, intermittent stream, whatever you wanna call it, has been there 75 years, and it works well. It's still working well. It's not broke, so why do you wanna fix it?
Because you have been getting a lot of silt, and this is the, this is Tom Ferry's...
I've been getting silt. You haven't been paying attention.
Oh, I have been. I, I know what's going on.
We've been getting silt from the construction of the houses on the hill. That's what's been going into the, now all these houses are settled, and the land is, is secured, all grassed in, there's no more silt coming in, but the, but the swale has been working good for, like I said, for 75 years. It's still working good. Since that last house has got stabilized, we've had some heavy rains, it's come down the hill into the swale, went down the road under the pipe into my pond. Nice clean water. The swale still works. Why do you wanna do this?
We don't, Bill.
We're not doing it.
The highway department wants to do it, and conservation didn't propose this.
This was a warrant article from last town...
What?
This was a warrant article from the last town meeting.
What's the file number, please?
The town actually voted to have this done. It is 0170488.
017...
0488.
Again, we are not proposing this. It is the street department to control street flooding.
Streets don't flood, and the swale works good.
We are here to hear their proposal. We did not propose this project. We are only hearing their proposal for this project.
Okay. So what's our sig, is it SE?
SE, southeast.
Southeast, that's what I thought.
Okay.
And it's 0170488.
Correct.
Okay, that's the number you have to use if you're gonna appeal.
Correct.
Okay. The swale works good. If it's not broke, don't fix it.
Has, Lisa, has Tom Ferry had addressed any other concerns with you in the past about this?
Well, it's a topic of conversation at the Stormwater Committee meeting often.
Well, it's gonna take its course. We have, we're, we have to act on, on the filing, the notice of intent, and if it's not, and once we act upon it, then he has the right to appeal it to, you know, for, for his concerns.
If, if you guys would feel more comfortable, I think maybe we could ask Tom Ferry to come, and we could have them at the next meeting. I don't know if we wanna wait until the November 16... I don't know if we wanna wait until the November 16th meeting.
If that is the case, then certainly this work would not be done this fall.
Well, we could continue it to our October 25th meeting if we wanted to.
So Stormwater's already approved this planning board?
No.
We're just approving the wetlands portion.
Right. This is a notice of intent.
I mean, our jurisdiction is to make sure it fits our jurisdiction. And if we're in agreeance of how it's being done, what it's done, it's not on us to make that decision?
Well, we're here to act upon the notice of intent.
Who filed the notice of intent? Did Beta file it or did Tom Ferry?
Tom Ferry, the street department did.
Mr. Mullen, Mullen. Michael Mullen of the town of.
Let's see, well, we should stop it.
No, I mean, we're acting upon the notice of intent.
This, this actually is a limited project. So it meets the definition of a limited project under 310 CMR. 10.53. Because it's within the roadway layout.
Okay, so that, so that is all town property that, that is being worked upon.
Yep.
Well, okay, well, we have to act upon the request. And what we can do is either deny the project, accept the project, continue the project, continue the hearing for, until our next meeting. Which I don't know if the 25th would be the right time to do it since that is already just a special meeting for a late applicant. Okay, anyone have, okay, again, so I, it's either continue it, to hear from Tom Ferry, to reject it, or to accept it and then issue an order of conditions.
Could we accept it potentially with the condition being satisfactory agreement between Lisa and Tom regarding the phasing?
Well, this would be part of the order of conditions. So, I mean, yes, we could do that.
People would be comfortable with that?
Lisa?
Yeah, that's fine. I have 21 days to issue them and, yeah. We could do, we could do it that way. Would you guys have any specific?
Was, was there any, was there anyone else out there with, okay? You, you were gonna make a motion then?
Uh, yeah.
Jim, Jim.
She has 21 days to issue it. There's a 10-day appeal period.
Correct.
Correct.
So that's 31 days before the project can be started.
Well, there's a 10-day appeal period, but I, yeah, I have 21 days, so, that's true. It is true. Tom Ferry may decide he wants to do it in the spring. I don't know. I wish he was here, but he's not.
I'd like to propose that we approve the notice of intent subject to the conditions that the highway department and the conservation agent find satisfactory agreement as far as the project phasing.
Okay, that would be the order of conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're passed. Okay, so, okay, all right. Next on the agenda, we have an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation and Enrad from Colerbelllo Bell Farms. They have, Bell Farms Estates has requested a continuance.
Thank you, Tyler.
To November 16, 2023.
Motion to continue to 11/16/2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Why, why would that continue?
I'm sorry?
He's here. I wasn't listening.
Why, why was that continued?
He's here. Can you, can you open that back up so we can review the?
Okay, well, we, we had a second, but we didn't have a vote on it yet. So, so we can, all right, so.
It wasn't continued yet.
Sorry, sorry, I thought that, thought that there was a.
I was going off my agenda here.
Yeah, me too.
So, I mean, technically, it's gonna be continued, of course. But we're gonna talk about the Weston and Sampson proposal.
Okay, okay, all right, you're on.
Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna be continued because it has to go through the, the process of being reviewed by town engineer, stuff like that. All right, I understand that part. But I, I thought it was gonna just be a little chit chat before moving forward.
Yeah, they have to approve the Weston and Sampson estimate.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, I, I guess there's not much to say but my opinion on something. But, you know, I did discuss with Lisa the, the cost of the, of the review. And it seems a bit absurd. It's more than double of what it was last time. The simple review, I shouldn't say simple, but the review is actually costing more than the whole delineation of 41 acres. Flagging, testing, reporting, everything. And the, the review is, it, it just, it doesn't match up.
We have discussed it and, and we.
And.
I mean, I, I agree.
Lisa, okay, you've talked to Mike Mullen on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I was waiting for contact from the gentleman who.
My greater concern, even outside of, knowing you're using a new company and now seeing what this quoting came back at, I'm concerned on like, what's the, you know, definitive plan review gonna be compared to what it was last time with the previous engineer? Because you had a cost breakdown basis versus how many lots, how much land and stuff. So, you know, if, if, if these numbers are doubling, I'm concerned about the overall review of the whole subdivision.
Paul, you have it in the back? Yeah, if you wanna look at it. It's in the, the last sheet.
So did they not break down what the fees were? Is that what you are asking?
No.
I would like a breakdown of the hours because they're saying the job's gonna be done within three weeks.
The, the, the cost of this review is, is already more money than what the review would be for a, not a definitive plan review, but the, like, sorry, what's the terminology?
For, for the, for the original Enrad?
No, not, not like a definitive, not, not the definitive subdivision plan.
Preliminary.
Preliminary, yeah.
Oh, for the planning board?
Like, a preliminary plan for, you know, 41 acres, 27, whatever, 30 lot subdivision is less money than this wetland review. Which this wetland review is double the cost of what it was last time.
Yeah, so this is really just out of our control right now. And now we're using Weston and Sampson. But Marty and Nova did do it last time and he, Mr. Rabello was part of that and he paid the bill and it was, it was half, so.
And again, it is.
Well, then, okay, that, the call is gonna, has gone in or is going in
Yeah, I called.
as a complaint on, on the amount of, of the fee.
I wasn't complaining to someone. I wanted, I need an outline of the hours they expect. So, part of this proposal, right, if we read it out, application package, these are the things I requested of them. Application package review, including review of the project site plan, field review with the conservation agent, preparation of a memo with, with their findings, and attendance at one conservation commission meeting. So, you know, I'm gonna be a part of the field work. I can already say is the field work's gonna take two weeks straight, then I'm gonna have to space it out because I, I can't be out there every day. I don't know, I don't know where they came up with the $8,800, but I'm gonna get a breakdown.
Yeah, the, the, one, one part that stinks too is that it's a different company because the original company that did it, they know how the, the delineation was, was done at the first time around. And there was no, uh, vernal pools. But I think based on the season that the testing was done, they said there was a possibility there could be vernal pools, so we accepted. We kept them vernal pools. Now we designed subdivision along those lines. And now with the.
We're not talking about the subdivision right now, though.
Yeah, no, but, but now with the new, the new wetland delineation, I was just referring to something to get into this. So now I had the, the wetland delineation done in prime season, absolutely prime season. And at this point, this, the three areas that were vernal pools before are still declared no vernal pools. So when the testing was physically done early in the season and late in the season, they were not vernal pools. So it's just a, a tough situation to be in. And now we got this new company coming in that isn't familiar with the previous test that has been done here. And, you know, I just want the best outcome. And again, I know things change, costs go up. If it's double, it's double. But now when I submit the preliminary, like I said, the preliminary, based on the town documents and breakdown, a preliminary subdivision plan of like 27 lots is, or 30 lots, whatever, is, was cheaper than this simple delineation.
This company is going to be reviewing all of it for the town now. For the planning board as well.
That's what I mean.
And stormwater.
I wonder what their cost is gonna be on all those other bigger.
I don't know. I know.
Just a, obviously a financial concern, but.
So the commission needs to decide on, do you wanna sign this? Do you wanna hold off on signing this? Maybe I can get some more information and we can have information for Wednesday's meeting and then you can make a decision.
Okay, if we say that we approve up to that amount, and I'm only, I, I'm saying that because if, with discussion with them, if they were to reduce it and you were to put the whole amount and you would get the, the difference back. And that would not hold you up on the project.
Correct, yes. That, I mean, the holdup is a big concern too. I don't wanna be set back.
You don't wanna wait another month.
Get a new decision.
But I will say, they said this could be done within three weeks of signature. I am away and I'm gonna be away from Dayton for a whole week. And I wanna be part of the review. So it may take up to four weeks because I need to add a week onto this.
Lisa, I see in here that they've budgeted for an eight-hour day in the field. How does that compare with other, other reviews?
Well, I think they said two 12-hour days in the field.
It's a, if redelineation is required, then needing up to two site visits and up to 12 hours in the field. But the budget that is included here, it says we have budgeted for one eight-hour day in the field.
Yeah, well.
One in the field, one in the office?
I think, right. And I think that, based on, the DEP did have comments that there's additional resources, so I would err on the side of caution and.
Well, I'm just asking if that's consistent with what you would expect to see in a review. Would you, was that, would you expect to see?
I would expect a couple eight-hour days, honestly. A couple eight-hour days for one person.
Okay.
I did find out that the technician's rate is $210 an hour.
God damn.
So I know I've been doing wetlands consulting for over 20 years and I don't charge that much. I don't work in this town, but when I do it, I don't charge that much.
There's 1,680 of it.
Wow, you're still far away from.
Yeah, but we're still.
Over the total price.
Right.
So is somebody in town policing these people or watching them? They just got hired.
Yeah, I mean, we all are, so.
Because they just get their sign off and they, I mean.
Right.
It's scary to say, hey, run away with the money. The town signed off. Here we go. Give us everything you got. Review, review, all the way review this.
So they're gonna bill monthly and keep us informed of the progress. But I, I'm gonna have a conversation to get the hours.
We need an hourly rate.
I have an hourly rate, 210. But I need the hour, so if we break down, that's a lot of hours.
So, but you're talking about two 16, two eight-hour days, that's 16 hours. So 16 times 210.
It's not even, it's not even half of the total.
It's not even half of this.
41 hours is what it comes out to be, the eight.
Where's 41 come in?
8,880 divided by $210 an hour.
I'm working on the other end. You, you divided 210 into 8,800, okay. And what I did was say, if they, if they're doing it two eight-hour days, that's 16 hours, times 210.
And a report and a meeting. But all those things shouldn't come, I, I mean, maybe 40 hours. But usually, the way these firms work is they have the lower-end people doing some of that stuff. It's not always the senior person at $210 an hour.
Yeah, no.
So how do we protect this gentleman from getting screwed? And set a precedent to these people that we can protect from bills running up like crazy?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for an outline of the hours.
Possibly.
Yeah, we're gonna keep track of it.
Right, well, we, we don't know that this isn't perfectly explainable.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that it does behoove us to dig deeper into why the price structure is the way it is.
Okay.
I'm not gonna make any comment.
Even if, even if it was around five, it's still high. But, hey, you know, costs go up, operating costs go up, we see that, but.
Right, there's a few reasons why it is what it is.
The 88 just makes you wonder, you know.
Having the facts from people that deliver it gives us the ability to fight and to know what's going on and what we don't know if we don't know.
Yeah, and also comparing it to other towns and just not my first rodeo, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now, okay, so would you be willing to say okay to that 8,800? But we are going to work and, and see if, what they say about accuracy of their opinions on, on timing of this. I'm, I'm kinda looking at you getting a project done. And without knowing it, it certainly wouldn't go beyond that 8,800.
Yeah.
But.
I think in my position, that's all I could ask for was approve up to 8,800 with also the discretion of the town to, you know, ask the right questions. And, you know, because I, and after me, it'll be the next person. You just wanna treat everyone fair.
I feel your pain on this because, you know, it's just, company, are they, are they accurate? I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, you said you had the work done for half that, to have it originally done. And maybe this is something that has to be forwarded to, to the company. And say, hey, what are you, what are you doing?
Yeah, and flagging, flagging and testing 41 acres is a lot more than two eight-hour days.
All right, so, so you, you want us then to go ahead with the 8,800, which you would have to put in a 53G. And we will look for more information. And if the figure comes down, well, then you get the difference back.
Yes, I approve that.
Okay.
I think you have to sign it, but I think Mike Mullen signs one as well, so I put it in front of you. You guys have to vote.
Okay.
And we still need a continuance.
All right, so then, we still have to continue this then, okay? Are you, you're all set with that then?
Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to 11/16/2023.
Prior to my second thing, do we need to hold the motion first to approve the review?
Approve, yes.
Yes, we do, okay.
Propose a motion that we approve the review with Weston and Sampson in the amount of, up to $8,880.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna have a continuation.
Motion to continue to 11/16/2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on.
Lisa, a question here. It said, accepted for the town of Dayton, Mass. And it says by its. Is that my, my title that, that's gonna go there?
Yeah, you can, but I honestly think Mike has to sign, right, Paul? Mike's gonna sign it, but, yeah.
Okay, so that itself, that in itself is sufficient.
Yeah, that should be sufficient for you. And I think Mike will probably come and sign it, but.
Lisa, this, this is done here.
Okay, great.
Okay, we have a, next item is a notice of intent at 2651 Pleasant Street, map 25, lot 135, from Aaron Reposo for a proposed single-level garage addition and corrective action plan to address previous encroachment to wetlands. A portion of this project is in the buffer zone to regulate wetland resources. File number SC17-490.
Good evening. Mark Mariano.
Good evening, Mark Mariano with Oak Hill Engineering, seventy-five Oak Hill Ave., Secunk, Mass. Tonight I'm representing Aaron Reposo for the project that you had just mentioned. That was a continuation from last month. From the last month, we all attended a, not all, but members attended a site walk in the last week in September. We examined the proposed work area, and we had discussions about the final site grading, and we've incorporated comments onto the plans as we discussed on, on the site. We're going to provide a boulder retaining wall that is going to hold the soap back to allow the existing building. Given the existing property topography, the, the ground does go up at the property edge to the north, so we would be maintaining water within the property and allowing it to dissipate on the property. We also actually reduced the amount of impervious surface on the driveway. The, we're going to try to maintain that tree that's found there. So we are providing a little bit of vegetation prior to it, prior to entering the street. Erosion control is staying the same as what we originally showed, and we also actually updated the plan to show where the existing septic system is on the rear of the property.
Are these new shrubs that are going in at that line, or is that what was, what was existing?
Those are the trees, yeah, those are those apple or pear trees, peach trees, I think.
So you're going to move the rabbit hatches?
Yep, yep, move any rabbit hatches from wetland area.
Anyone else have any questions? I know several of us were at the site, and we, I think we got a lot of our questions in there.
You said the compost filter, so on, which.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, no, no straw wattles.
Anyone in the audience have any questions?
This area was considered by committee at May twenty-twenty-one a public health issue because of the floods in the back, and it was supposed to be addressed by a drainage culvert or whatever they call it, and it was never put in. So that public health issue.
It still exists as it is, and it's never, so that's not going to go away, this isn't going to help it. So shouldn't that be addressed before anything else is done with that property?
So the, the concerns, well, first off, that wasn't part of this filing. The, the roads that are found there are, are private ways, they're not adopted by the town. This is what I had talked about with Mr. Ferry, and in order to get access to there, you would have to have, they would have to have approval to be able to do that, to do that work. I don't know where that stands.
They have, the owner stopped the project originally. That was all approved, but he stopped it. They had it all marked out by, whoever marks that out, and it was ready to go, and then it was stopped before it was done. So that still exists, that stagnant water fills up every year. It's wet virtually all year, almost now. And that's water that with all the wild birds and the, and the domestic birds that are in there, it just fills up with waste from the birds constantly. So, I mean, even in the minutes from your meeting, it was called a public health issue. So I would think you'd want to address the public health concern. Shouldn't that be addressed before this is approved? I mean, Mr. Ferry approved it, this committee approved the original plans for this drainage system.
I understand what you're, what you're saying, and we, when we visited the site, we did see a variety of wildlife there. This would actually come under the, the board of health issue. And, you know, I'm not trying to, to dodge you, but here, where, where, where we view this project and the attempt to do this project as being either in uplands, which is marginal, I'm going to, I'm going to use that word marginal, and, and buffer zone, the health issue does not come under our jurisdiction, unless, I don't know if you.
Well, protection of groundwater, but this whole area is in a flood zone, and for a while, the owner was cutting this wetland.
Yep, so what we're providing is.
For his animals.
Well, I mean, just the natural topography of the area, even if the drainage system went in, wouldn't drain that area either. You would still have standing water in that area.
It was to keep the water off the road, if I remember it correctly.
Yeah, it was to prevent.
We would not be doing.
It's getting worse every year, unfortunately. I think residents need some kind of action down there.
Well, all those houses are in a flood zone.
I know, but this is stagnant water. This isn't water from the river.
Sometimes here is a day late, huh?
You know, it's water that's stagnant, the birds are constantly in there. I don't think you'd want to, want that in your yard, your neighborhood.
Yeah, he brought it up to the.
He brought it up to basically everybody over the years.
They push it to this.
This committee says, back committee, we never get anything done. And septic was going to be done, this committee approved the original project to address it at least, and then it got canceled by the owner. So I would think that should be addressed before this is approved, because it's a public.
Well, there's two ways. The road has to be approved by the town for the town to go in there and prove, and undo it. So if, if the town doesn't accept the road, then they can't do that work.
The road, the road, yeah, but hear him out.
Well, first of all, it was approved, and he stopped it, the owner stopped it, it wasn't the town that stopped it.
The project may have been approved, but the ownership of the right-of-way is not in the custody of the town. It's the, the town has to take and accept the road.
They had a plan that was going to work.
Right, Mr. Ferry, can you speak to this now?
What did you have it back on?
I don't even know where you guys are.
Pleasant Street, two-six-five-one, and Beach.
What's the question?
You had a, you had a project approved to address that flooding in the backyard there, it was going to relieve the problem. It was going to be on Beach Street, up Pleasant Street, it was all knocked out, ready to go, and it was canceled, it was never done, because I believe the owner wouldn't allow anybody to do anything. Originally, it was off, he signed off, and then he changed his mind, apparently.
Right, my work was only going to be on Pleasant Street?
Yeah, which, you haven't got that.
I, I do have a little bit of a nice problem there, and someone else could bring that water you just mentioned through that system. So we just need to time it, that's all. If they send me ways and means of getting that water through that system, then I'd be interested in putting it in.
Why don't we address that, it sends in your minutes, it's a public health issue, isn't that something that should be addressed? Public health is important. Somebody's got to address it somewhere in the town.
Is there a H O A?
No. But this is, it's private property, the person responsible should be made health responsible for fixing it.
It's not.
Those aren't, those aren't Thomas' up the road.
Those aren't Thomas' up the road.
Why are you doing, why are you doing that?
Right, it's private property, so why?
What you were going to do, this private property could connect here and relieve the problem, which would relieve the problem for the neighbors.
So who owns the property?
This per, the person.
That owner, the owner? You're, you're owner?
The, the, of all those properties owns a similar line of that.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense.
So I say, before you approve that project, this should be addressed. Even, even with the approval of the project, it would bring that water, it would still be stagnant water. It was the intention, it was the intention.
We need to fill it in.
Well, you have a private property, it should be addressed to fix it, shouldn't that the town somehow address that?
I mean, it's wetlands, it's meant to hold water, that's.
Yeah.
And that was the play, wetland. It wasn't the whole. I know, people mowing it down, I mean, I mean, it's puddle of water with thirty, forty, fifty birds every day, and you know what geese do all day long, I mean, it's not a, it's not healthy, that's for sure.
I mean, if we went around to every body of water that had geese poop in it.
No, but these are not wild geese, these are domestic, they're trapped there.
These are, these are.
When we wipe out a bunch of mallards floor.
So.
Well, they all go there, because there's food there that they, I'm sure the other birds are, I'm just saying, I mean, it is a problem, just ask anybody in the neighborhood, the smell, the noise, but okay, but let's address the, the health issue more than anything. I say, I mean, I think.
When we're looking at the project, is the project going to cause pollution, the project itself? That's what, we need to look at it based on the actual project we have in front of us.
But you have another project in front of you that didn't get done, that, that should have been.
We approved it. It's not our fault it didn't get done.
Well, it's a public health issue again.
We approved it.
You can't just drop a public.
We want it to happen.
So how do we get it?
The commission.
Have you gone to the board of health to complain? I, I mean, this, okay, that is going to be.
Many of the members aren't, like, there's new members now, so that's why some of them are kind of like, they don't really know. But the commission did approve the drainage proj.
This was some, some years ago.
It was two years ago, right?
Twenty-one, yeah.
And then it never got done?
Yeah, about eighteen months ago, yeah.
I mean, I would think that should be done before this is approved.
It's a separate filing, and it has to be done, yet, but the roadway has to be accepted.
Now, this, this drainage trench that is needed to alleviate the problem, is it on your client's?
That would be on our client's property, yeah, but it wouldn't alleviate the problem.
No, the problem's not going to get alleviated just by, by Mr. Ferry putting a catch basin in it. The problem is much wider, there were houses built in a flood zone, this house is built maybe in wetlands, but they were built years ago, and that's not our fault.
No, I know, this is the.
So we cannot fix the Wild West, do you know what I mean?
Killed every tree in that area, and nobody did any, and I know Mr. Ferry's aware of that, because I spoke to him about it.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, we've tried over the years, and nothing, nothing seems to get done. We're banging our head against the wall.
So you're suggesting that this garage is going to make it worse, or is it, are you just looking for relief from what's already there?
I mean, I'm not an expert, it could make it worse, but definitely not, we have a problem ongoing.
I would like to know the engineer's opinion on this. He is an engineer, Mark is an engineer.
The proposed garage, if, if we're looking at water that's towards, going towards that, that real property, I mean, if we didn't have the wetlands in the front, we would be out of jurisdiction there.
Right.
We'd be here. Mainly here because of the wetlands found on Pleasant Street.
And so how, what is the elevation of this project above the wetlands?
It would be the same as where the septic is right now.
You know, is it, is it two feet, is it five feet above the wetland line?
It's about four feet over a hundred feet. Right, elevation nine, looks like the edge of the wetland is about elevation five.
Now, Lisa, in your opinion, what is the wetland impact of this project?
The, the wetland impact? I don't see any wetland impacts. You're going to take the roof, the roof drainage, right, and you're going to, what are you doing with the roof drainage?
Well, it's, it's going to infiltrate underground, we have swale, yeah, we have a swale going to the, to the north, where it's going to dissipate.
Yeah, I think the mitigation that's proposed, because we found out that he's been cutting them for years, the wetlands, growing this back into forest, that mitigation alone is, that's going to help mitigate for any potential issues, but I don't see any, because this isn't even in the, proposed in the seventy-five-foot zone.
So before you're to.
Well, it's just.
Make a determination on the basis of impact to resource areas, and there's not substantial impact to the resource area, I don't think that, I think it would be a misuse of our authority to hold the project hostage to doing other things to accomplish other concerns.
Yeah.
It would not be the proper application of our authority if we're not making a determination on the basis of.
I think you hit it on the nose, Paul.
Right, and we cannot force the town D P W to do this project, even though we approved it. We can't force them to do it.
Okay, I, I have a question for you, Lisa. You said that this, some of this land in the back was going to be returned to its natural state. Would that in itself, as the, as the mater, as the vegetation grows back, would that eliminate some of that wildlife, because they're, they wouldn't be able to roost or eat or whatever they're doing?
I think the whole area is going to change, yes. I think, yeah, it's definitely.
Birds won't be in a pond if there's trees, uh, things around.
Right, it's not going to be open anymore, it's going to be grown in. I mean, should we, could we? Yes, we could ask them to, to plant some trees in there.
Willows, something?
We could, we could ask, ask for a little more than just letting it grow back.
I don't know how successful trees will be in that area.
Red maples?
Find some, find some willow trees, and I'll dry that up.
Willows grow quick, too.
Yeah, willows, willows retain a lot of water also.
Okay, let us deal with what's at hand for us. And unfortunately for this gentleman, we are not involved in those board of health issues, we are only involved in our project, and if it doesn't contribute to the problem, then we have to separate ourselves from, from that issue.
We are not really going to remove.
And I think Paul said it very well.
Yeah.
That we have to deal with what's at hand for us, and not for some other department, and in this case, board of health.
Right, and I want to reiterate, we are having them remove the sheds that are in the wetland resource. So all the sheds, coops.
The conditions.
Yes.
The hatches. It's already written.
Well, that, that is on the plan.
Okay.
But I mean, it will be conditioned.
Yep.
Do we want to have them move the sheds that are in the twenty-five-foot? The coops? We can. Rabbit hatches, sheds.
Are there, are there any other, okay, yes, sir, your name?
My name is Man Walker, and somehow, something impacts something of their water, because thirty-three years ago, I bought a lot over there, there was no water, I cut grass and everything. Now, in the wintertime, it comes right through my property. Here's the picture over here, I showed before.
Okay.
The water comes, in the wintertime.
Are these the same photos that you gave us?
This is the back of their property.
The same photos you gave us last time?
Yes, I've seen those, I've seen those photos before, yeah.
Well, you haven't, take this one. It wasn't here last time. This is a tree in my property that is surrounded by water.
Now, okay, oh, let me see, what's, what's.
So what are all these pictures in this water?
No.
I mean, you're saying he put the water there?
I have pictures thirty-three years ago.
So are you saying that he put the water there, or he did something to get?
I don't know, something is.
So we're holding him against something that nature is putting water on his property?
I don't think nature did it, somebody did something that could bring water in.
Okay.
Okay, now, this year.
We need to limit the conversation on this to maybe five minutes.
Twice the normal amount of rainfall. Okay, and those pictures are over there, over there. Okay.
This is in two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Okay, this is where, two, three years ago, two, three years ago. It, it just, before, and I never had water on my.
Wetlands changed, sir.
Years ago, my backyard was a sheep pasture, and today you would sink in it like quicksand, quicksand.
So whatever they do in this.
So when, when this grows up, when the trees start growing and taking up groundwater, you get a shot at your property. So this condition allows him to move, but forces him to get this, to get this, he has to let the backyard grow, which will take more water out of the ground, up in the trees, it'll stop the ducks once the trees come up, because they can't fly.
Are you going to have them plant trees also?
He's going to have to let it go back to natural.
But I mean, you said.
As those ducks, as those ducks take craps, the seeds are going to go in the ground and eventually grow.
But you said the tree, we're going to condition trees to be planted, that would help.
That's up to the commission, yeah.
Initially, it was some trees around there, but somebody killed them. Yeah.
I don't know about that, but. So we've seen the facts of the, the dead trees, do we have proof that he did it?
You know. You know, uh...
It would be very, very, I don't think unfair without a trial to prove that he actually did them. It would be fair to just say, you and you. I mean, yes, it'd be the right thing to say and do, but we don't have the proof and it's not fair.
Yeah.
Forcing him to let it grow, it might take ten, might take twenty years.
It'll be natural.
It'll help, but who you nice to, you don't want to just let it grow.
The ducks are gonna plant plenty of seeds, trust me.
I just, what's the dimensions of this garage, please?
Twenty...
Twenty-six by forty-two.
Isn't that kind of large for a, is that a three-story garage or...
Not sure on how many bays it is.
Well, that's just the inventory given. For a, for a two-story garage, isn't that twenty-four? Yeah, that's kinda accessible, isn't it, for a garage?
Uh, that's, if, if he comes under, um...
It's within the setbacks and under...
If he's in within the setback, as he just said, and does everything properly, we're not gonna be involved in what size he wants. You know, that, that's his choice and, and if he's allowed to do it, or because of his distance from wetlands, uh, and when we were there, you know, the contour of the land does show that he is so many, what, four or five feet above the wetlands in that area? You know, is it going to contribute?
I think your best benefit is for him to get this, that he can't go back there. And if anybody's seen back there, he's gonna be sitting in one of these seats having to answer to us.
Yeah.
That is your golden goose.
Right.
So to get him, I missed...
By, by allowing him to do his project,
Yeah.
forcing him to stay out of that back,
Yeah.
and the town's eyes are on him to not touch anything back there, we've got documentation of what's there now.
Okay.
Three of us have been there.
Okay.
If it changes, you're gonna be sitting in one of these seats.
My number's right on that flyer, the flyer that's on the end of the seats there, my number's...
It might take time to grow.
Yeah, but letting it grow is gonna help.
Big, big.
Yeah, I agree with that. It would've been nice to have the culvert or whatever, the basin, but that's okay, I get it.
Okay.
I'm done.
This acceptance is gonna eventually get you that ground stable to as best as it could.
We're also not just requiring that wetland to grow back, but we're requiring the twenty-five foot, um, area to reestablish.
And it's gonna be signed off, no signs.
Mark, they realize all around the sheds has to grow, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Um, I know that you mentioned that an option could be, I know the biggest concern and sound like is water. I've obviously recorded quite a few of your meetings and I've noticed in some of them, you have required homeowners who were not the previous homeowners who made damage, say, plant trees or let things grow back. So if you're saying that, say, I think somebody said a willow absorbs a lot more water, why wouldn't we add that as a condition to be something to help there be less water?
That's up to the commission, yeah.
Just a suggestion, I guess, for the commission, if that's an option to make less water, why not add it?
Thank you.
Like, if him did it, well, I've seen you guys give it to other people who have the...
They need it.
Property that somebody else had ruined and you guys had them add those conditions.
Willows have a tendency to take up a lot of groundwater, but can be weak when there's contaminants in the water. So being next to, being next to roadways, willows sometimes suck up things and then croak.
Right.
That's why you see a lot of dead willows next to roadways.
Any type of tree or planting that would do well enough, and if you know, any other plantings that would work well enough, might be a nice way to get rid of more of the water for the neighbors.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience? Okay, uh, do we have a motion on the floor to accept or reject this project? As certainly, if we accept it, there's gonna be, uh, conditions that would require replanting and protection of the back area. No motion?
I'm open to exploring some replanting.
What?
I'd be open to there being, to approval of replanting.
So you can make a motion to accept the project with, uh, planting in the wetlands?
All right, I'm so moved, I'd like to propose a motion to approve with, uh, subjects to...
Do we wanna be specific?
Yeah, we, we wanna be specific on this because we, we wanna ensure if there's plantings that you have success rates and, and that we don't, you know...
Well, I, I'd like to leave that up to Lisa because she's gonna have...
Uh, wait, wait, I'm not designing it, he's designing it.
No, no, I...
Well, here's the thing, is if, if we say, hey, look, we'll put them on the wetland line, you know, that, that's a clear demarcation of where, where we're looking for that. I mean, that's, that would be...
It's our best shot at getting something to hold.
Yeah, I didn't think that you guys wanted it in the wetlands.
Well, it's underwater, you can't plant...
That's what I mean.
You'll drown anything you try. So it's gonna have to go naturally or it's not gonna take.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can intertwine it with those posts, so, so they...
Yep, that's a good idea.
Say that again?
We, well, we have posts and it's wide open there, I mean, we could add
Yeah.
uh, a couple trees in between those posts.
Just like two, how about like four or six, four?
What size are we looking?
Do ten inch...
Ten inch caliber?
Ten inch? You're gonna get a crane?
That's a little big.
Ten inch caliber, you're gonna get a crane from the front end to the back end?
Okay, fine. Do six foot, four to six foot, four to six foot tree, just a small tree.
Four to six, I want you to plant a four to six.
Four to six foot?
Vertical height.
Not diameter, talking height.
Vertical!
Okay.
You know, my height...
So we usually measure in caliber. So I would say, what, inch and a half to two inch?
That's...
Okay, that's what I meant.
Okay, motion is...
Hold on, is there a discussion on the species?
Can me and Mark decide on the species or do we wanna specify right now?
Cal, caliber foot sizes, we understand, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you made the motion to accept the project with...
Uh, subject to the conditions which include four two-inch trees planted along the, along the demarcation?
Yep, in between the, the posts found on the...
In between the posts, notated on the demarcation.
Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.
I have twenty-one days. And I'm, I'm trying to take a vacation somewhere in there, so we'll talk.
I, I will start it. Okay, the, uh, next item is a notice of intent at Zero Elm Street. I am going to excuse myself.
Notice of intent at Zero Elm Street, map twenty, lot eighty-four dash four.
Okay.
From Zero Elm Street for construction of stormwater basin along with pavement and grading associated with a storage building. A portion of work falls within the buffer zone to bordering vegetated wetland. DEP file S E O one seven.
I have the number here, I don't know if you guys have gotten it yet, we just got it today.
Yeah.
I was gonna say XX, but... Do you need this back?
No.
Thank you.
You know where the water tower is? I'm sorry, it's right behind.
Up that lane?
Between the subdivision and the water tower, yeah. In the woods, kind of. Just make sure you tell them about the, they might see it.
Just for the record, um, final number is S E zero one seven zero four nine one.
Okay, so this is right by the, you said this is right by the water tower, right?
Yep.
My name is Tom Morris with Zenith Consulting Engineers. So the, the property is located north of Hill Crest Drive, this is the subdivision I believe Lisa was talking about. And it's up gradient of the muddy cove brook. The Elm Street kinda comes down in both directions to that point, um, which drains out to Totten River.
This is going on the hill?
It is on the hill, yes.
Just to remind, some of the, some of the commissioners are new. We approved an ANRAD last year, right last year, or was it the beginning of this year on this?
I don't know exactly when it was.
Should say it right on the plan, but, um...
Yeah, I think that you have it. August twenty-one, no, sorry. January of twenty-three.
Oh, okay, yep, thank you.
So yes, the, an OBRAD was issued for the wetland line, it was all approved. So it, it's quite a slope that this sits on, um, going from the bottom of the page to the top. Um, I mean, we're dropping from a hundred and fifteen down to thirty-five. The portion of the, the site that's being developed now is just right down here below spot. So the green highlight here is the wetland line, blue is the twenty-five foot, and then the orange is the hundred foot buffer. So the project is proposing a storage building. We have pavement going around it, it's all, this side we're cutting down into the hill, this side we're filling up to create a level area for the building. It's being graded so that all the runoff from the entire thing is coming down to public cat basins into a stormwater basin, which is designed as a constructed stormwater wetland. So there's a permanent pool, vegetation, there's a lot of detention time and very good treatment for the runoff. And then it's outletted across here to the side, outside of the fifty foot, of the fifty foot buffer, and they would flow down the hill to the abiding property, um, which would eventually end up at that brook that goes out to the Totten River.
Is that dumped into the brook or the pond that's in there now?
Um, so, so there's a large reservoir on the other side of Elm Street. So it goes down...
Muddy cove.
Yeah, muddy cove, there's a reservoir inside the fence.
Right, yeah, the...
Yeah, that's muddy cove.
And that's where it's gonna dump in, right there?
Yeah, there, there's quite a bit of land in between, it's not going directly. I don't know the scale of it, but there's a fairly large property in between.
How far does that come in?
Lisa, is the proximity to the brownfield gonna...
Up gradient.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And the, the portion of the wetland that's closest to the site is actually up gradient of the work. It drains down toward the building that we're putting in. So we have a swale that's going along this side that's catching everything that's coming down, including whatever comes out of the wetland here. And that drains right down in the same direction that our drainage outlet is. So with the work, we're proposing erosion control. The blue line here is, uh, silt sock being put in around the entire toe of the slope, uh, limit of work. So that will be put in to collect any runoff and erosion that's gonna be done during construction.
There's gonna be a lot of material that has to get moved to get this done.
Yes, that's true.
Have you a lot of room for the material to be handled, or is it gonna be in and out? Because that line right there, I know that slope, and you're gonna need a workspace to handle that much material and equipment.
Right, and anywhere, I mean, the, the property runs out here, so they wouldn't be able to do anything north of that. So anything they would do for staging would have to be either in the site right here or it would have to be south, which would run down into that erosion control.
Yeah, we wanna kinda designate a stockpile area, but, um, I just wanted to remind the commission that, um, because this is a commercial development with stormwater, that we'll be sending that out to Weston and Sampson.
Right.
So this is just the preliminary, I don't know if you wanna open it up for questions, Steve? Other questions from anyone?
Any questions from the public?
What is the building used for?
Uh, it's storage. Um, so the, the applicant, um, owns even plumbing. So it's likely that it's just gonna be used for his business, he's gonna be storing his own things there.
Plumbing supplies, trucks.
Correct.
And so how many acres, did you mark here, how many acres are, um, pretty much gonna be left alone? Or how many, how many acres is he using out of the twenty, twenty-eight?
I mean, this is, this can't be more than an acre and a half, two acres at most of the project site.
I just wanna reiterate, like I did with the ANRAD and the, maybe tell your client, I think that, that land to the east would make excellent conservation land.
And from my understanding, he has no intent on doing anything back there anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
You had mentioned that the last time you were there.
Yeah.
Lisa, your thoughts or concerns?
Just wanna see Weston and Sampson review it for stormwater. They have the, um, proper erosion controls. And you're gonna encompass the entire limit of work with the erosion controls, right?
Except the, the slope coming down to the site. So we're doing the bottom of the slope all the way around.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And then catch basins in the street are protected?
So nothing is going to be draining to the street.
Okay.
Can't get to the street with the way that road's...
Yeah, we're grading right down from the road, our entrance is gonna come up. It, it's only probably five feet we're grading up, just so that the road drainage doesn't come in.
Yeah.
Um, and then everything's going down into the site.
Okay. So this will be continued per Weston and Sampson's, um, estimate, and then they'll do their review.
Okay, so is, is there any additional action that's being looked at for us tonight or just...
Just, just, uh, need him to sign a continuance, you guys need to have a, you know, vote on a continuance.
All right, looking for a motion for a continuance.
Second that?
To eleven sixteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to continue to eleven sixteen, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
I just need you to come sign this, when you get a minute.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on. You want me to continue, Jim, or you? Do you want me to continue?
Oh, I'm, I'm out of this, I thought you...
No, no, we're done, okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, you wanna continue?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So we're now at compli, uh, certificate of compliance for Legacy North Properties.
Yep, okay, I got that. We all set to continue here? Okay, we have a request for a certificate of compliance from Legacy North Properties at thirty-four twenty-three Sharps Lot Road. Lisa, has that been all set?
Yes, I, I don't know if some of the owners here, but, um...
I don't see...
Okay, do we have a motion then to issue these certificate of compliance?
Site is stabilized, the system's been, been a long time, putting, putting...
I'll take that.
Everything looks good, you're satisfied, Lisa?
I need two coffees, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be here after all these comments.
Lisa, you're sat, you're satisfied with the state of things over there, okay?
Yeah, everything's stabilized.
Motion... Motion to accept certificate of compliance of Legacy North Properties.
All in favor? Okay, another request for a certificate of compliance from Richard J. Riome, Prime Engineering, from Maris Lane. Lisa?
Yep, well, it's been issued to Richard Fetteroff. Hopefully that's good enough that he's the owner, but um. Yep, the site is stable, and Dave and I, Dave and I actually looked at all of them together.
This one needs David J.
Okay, this, there's one or two there.
This one needs David J.
Okay. I haven't signed it yet. Okay, we have a request for a certificate of compliance from Richard Fetteroff, Stonegate Landing.
That one's complete.
Lisa, we're all set with that one?
Yeah, that's one we just signed.
Okay, this one here, it's got five.
Lisa, how do you feel about nine seventy-seven Stonegate?
Uh, nine seven, that, that one's also, yeah.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to issue the certificate of compliance?
Motion to issue certificate of compliance for Richard Fetteroff, Stonegate Landing LLC, nine seven seven.
Second.
Is it seconded? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Needs, needs David J.
Okay, we have an old fifty-three G account. We gotta close that for long-built homes. Hunter Hill, that's J.K. Holgrim Engineering LLC. Okay, is that the clo-, now is their money, still funds in there to return, or?
Yes, they will be returned to the applicant. So what will happen will be that if this, well, once this is passed, the commission will draft a letter to the treasurer's office.
Yep.
Requesting that the fifty-three Gs be closed out.
Okay.
At that point, I will, I'll notify the town accountant, put him on the warrant, close the accounts out, and issue the proceeds back to the applicant.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the fifty-three G account?
Motion to close old fifty-three G account on long-built homes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also need one for J.K. Holgrim Engineering as well. Those two fifty-three Gs on the.
Oh, motion to close old fifty-three G account on J.K. Holgrim Engineering LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I didn't see the two there. Long-built and, okay. Okay, we have a request for a certificate of compliance from Anton Roderick at seven thirty-four Hart Street. Lisa, we're all set with that?
Yeah, I just don't know where I put it. Just put it somewhere. Hold on one second.
Okay. Is there a motion to issue the certificate of compliance?
Motion to issue certificate of compliance. Anton Roderick on property seven thirty-four Hart Street, Lot Two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I had a conversation with the new owners there too as well, and gave them brochures and made sure they understood the limitations of the site.
Excellent.
Are they removing their little tree there in the front?
It's not a tree. It's campish grass, and yeah, we're gonna take it out, but.
I'm gonna go this way. That one's coming down.
One mental campish grass. It's been basic. Yeah, you can hear it here. You just take one.
Okay.
It's David J.
Okay.
Anton, we did talk about leaving the erosion controls. We're gonna leave the erosion controls until the end of the winter because of that slope.
Okay. Okay, we're going to review and discuss regular meeting of the calendar. These are up in the future, February and then May. Just something to think about at this time to. The possibility of moving up one week in February. I'm gonna be away for that February meeting, you know, unless you guys just wanna, you know, that's fine with me. And then in May, Lisa has a situation, and, and I plan to be away too. And I think it's for, actually, I'm not sure what, what day that I'll be away then. So, so there's a possibility, once I find out when graduation is in Colorado. You know, we'll discuss it at probably the next month, but is everyone?
I have a couple of conflicts in May, so.
Yeah, so, so we'll have to.
Are you looking for a motion tonight?
No, no, just, just to keep open maybe the thought of that happening. Now, of course, you know that on Wednesday of next week at four thirty, we have a brief meeting. Should be quick. It's a late notification. And so to keep it within the twenty-one day state limit of having the hearing. So that's at four thirty here on, on Wednesday. Okay.
Do we wanna add the meeting calendar to that? Do we wanna agree to the meeting?
I don't know if I'm gonna know by then yet, when, when it's gonna be. But I, I think early May would, you know, the second Thursday, but I don't know when your time is.
I have a conflict the third and the, actually.
Well, I should, I should know. I'll know certainly by November.
Okay. We'll keep it on the agenda for November. We'll make a decision. We'll set the meeting calendar.
Bill's payable. Beta.
Oh, we're at authority designation for expenditures.
Sorry?
You skipped one.
Review, discuss, signature, authority designation for expenditures. Okay, okay. Lisa, you have something for me to sign there, or?
Uh, yes. Yep, you guys each have to fill in your name and sign it and put commissioner, and then we need to vote.
I think, are, are we supposed to designate a primary signator and then an alternate signator?
Correct.
So, okay, so essentially, we can authorize one member of the commission to be the primary signer to sign off on expenses. That way we don't all have to sign off on them.
Yeah.
I think having the chairman be the, the primary signature, I think, just makes the most sense. I feel like Dave is very involved in the day-to-day and is very accessible. I feel like he'd be a great alternate if he'd be willing to.
Am I gonna still sign for anything? Because right now I signed for me morning to you all. I don't know.
You would continue to, oh, um.
I can't, I don't think I can really.
Idles?
To be there right in the morning.
Would you like to make me the alternate? Because I'm in town hall anyway.
Okay, that, that would, that would work fine.
Okay.
That would work fine.
So I, I was just at a CPC meeting earlier tonight where we did both designations as one motion. So if you would be amenable, we could, someone could propose one motion to nominate you as primary, and then myself as the alternate.
Okay.
I just signed, hey, welcome me in morning today. That's getting turned on.
I'll still pay you.
Oh, yes. I forget he's the one that pays.
Yes.
Okay, someone wanna make that motion then? On primary and secondary?
I would like to propose a motion for Chairman Digits to be the primary signator, with myself as the alternate signator in his absence.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have an invoice here from Beta in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred, ninety-two dollars and seventy cents. Okay, yes. Okay.
No, it's just you, you're just inside.
You've been so powered.
Right. Do we have, we need a, a motion to pay though?
We have a motion to pay Beta invoice number two in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred, ninety-two dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Beta fifty-three G invoice number one for Mained Lane on New Leaf Energy in the amount of two thousand, three hundred, ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion to pay Beta fifty-three G invoice number one for fifty-three G account of Mained Lane, New Leaf Energy in the amount of two thousand, three hundred, ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lisa, here's, here's.
Okay, you can just leave it right there.
Okay. And what's these here? Okay, let me, okay. That is, okay, we just did that one too. That's, okay, Gay and Gay in the amount of eight hundred dollars, invoice number seven four eight eight zero.
Motion to pay Gay and Gay invoice number seven four eight eight zero in the amount of eight hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
WB Mason invoice twenty-four oh nine eighty-four thirty-seven six in the amount of one hundred, three dollars, ten cents.
Motion to pay WB Mason invoice two four zero nine eight four three seven six in the amount of one hundred and three dollars and ten cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Can we? What, what are the WB Mason purchases?
Orders for?
Yeah.
Paper, ink?
This is for a ten-pack, uh, oh, nine, so it's the folders, files. These are the file folders.
Okay, we still got two more from WB Mason.
Morine didn't do it all, and why she just get a bunch of different ones, so.
Okay.
One of them we're getting refund for because they were the wrong size folders, but we have to pay it anyway accordingly.
Okay. Well, let's go to WB Mason, twenty-four eleven eighty-seven thirty-nine seven in the amount of sixty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Motion to pay WB Mason invoice two four one one eight seven three nine seven in the amount of sixty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents.
And that's for signature plates. These ones are.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did we ever hold the motion on the first one?
Yes, we had the motion.
Okay.
That was, that was the thirty-nine, thirty-five thousand.
Oh, oh, no, I'm sorry, the first WB Mason for a hundred dollars. Did we end up having?
Yes, a hundred and three dollars. Yes, we did that one.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, WB Mason again, twenty-four thirteen zero five two seven four in the amount of forty-six dollars, sixty cents.
Motion to pay WB Mason invoice two four one three zero five two seven four in the amount of forty-six dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay, Mass Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals, two thousand twenty-four membership, twenty dollars.
So yeah, this is something you can give the members up, but it's only twenty dollars and it gets us all in. So they hold in-person events. You can go to them for questions. You can network.
Yeah, that's money well spent.
Mm-hmm. So twenty dollars.
Motion to pay MSMCP two thousand twenty-four membership of twenty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
If we wanna take some of these out of order, the next, all right, so, I'm sorry, what is your, what is your name? Patricia Maderos is here from One Maris Lane. I had Morine sent out the agenda to everyone that is on the enforcement section as well.
Would you be willing to entertain a motion to take One Maris Lane out of order?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ma'am, you're on. One Maris Lane.
We cut down some trees that were hazardous. One was leaning on a very big tree. It was there for several years that they were, they just built another shed. We took it down. The builder was supposed to take care of these tree trees. We took care of it because they weren't patches. Because we had a, one, another tree that was a four-crotch tree that was split in the middle, so it was just a matter of time when that was gonna split. And then we had another one that was a three-crotch tree. And all these trees are right in front of where the conservation line is. You can clearly see the conservation stick.
It's, it's the conservation, natural heritage. It's, it's actually the conservation restriction land that we oversee. And it's natural.
On, on the restricted land, or, well, if, if the trees were that bad, they had to come down.
Can we back up? So the shed is brand-new. The shed barn?
Yes.
The barn is brand-new.
No, they're, the, the Lima shed is brand-new. This is the tree, the tree was going to hit that shed.
Okay.
We asked her not to put it there because, you know.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Back up. Mr. Maderos built a very large structure that he worked with Proline on, and he worked with me on to make sure that he was gonna stay outside of the wetlands and stay outside of the conservation restriction area. However, when I went, went there to do an inspection up the road, I noticed there were some trees down, and I immediately asked him why he took them down without talking to me. And you really can't take trees out of conservation restriction land, especially in the turtle habitat. So this is, this is why she's here. We wrote them a letter.
It was the, the conservation stick was here. Those trees were all along this line right here. And I admit, my husband wanted to originally put his, his garage or shed, whatever you wanna call it, we call it the barn, in the restricted land. And I told him, he said, yeah, I can go for that. And so it's not in the restricted land. But these trees, they probably were damaged during the filling of that whole subdivision. And so we took them down because they're hazardous. I mean, we've already had, I've only been in this house for a year and a half. We've had three trees from the back snapped during winter months and nearly hit our separate tank field. We've had three trees from the back snapped during winter months and nearly hit our separate tank field. So, you know, that's the reason why we took them down. I have no problem putting more trees back, especially in the area where the lemurs were cutting the grass. That is a.
Brand new soil.
It's a drainage soil, so we can put trees in it because there's never any water in there.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I think the commission might want to do a quick site visit.
So, just for the future, you're not allowed to touch trees?
At all?
In the conservation restriction land?
With, with the conservation restriction.
Yeah.
But it's.
You have the right to take the trees if the, if their structural integrity is not, you approach the board, you ask us, we do a site visit, we look.
Yeah, we allow a fourteen to do that.
Take that down, done, go, get them down, get them done, see. But knowing that the garage was in, you, to me, you knew the lines.
Right.
You knew a twenty-five foot no touch and you were in that zone.
Well, no, there's no twenty-five foot no touch because this is not a wetland. This is why.
So, we need a site visit?
Yeah, let's do a site.
Okay.
So, we, we wrote.
Full agree on tree guy myself, at least, yeah, hazardous trees.
Yeah, but I have a picture of the tree that was leaning on the other tree. And I'll tell you, since we took this down, we basically saved two other trees from probably going bad. We have, so this is, this, and I know this doesn't look very big, but this tree is probably sixty, seventy feet tall. Leaning on another tree just like, and it's been upturned.
How did you get it out of that area?
How did, it's still sitting there, it's just down. Because every time it was windy out, all you could hear was it creaking like crazy.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd want to take a peek. I mean, it's just a leaning tree.
Yeah, but I mean, it's been there for years and we asked her not to put the shed there and she did it anyways. And, you know, we had to be responsible and take it down because we don't want it to fall on it.
Let's go take, do a site visit. Uh, Wednesday's good for everybody. And is there a day that's preferable for you or your husband?
Uh, Mondays and Tuesdays are not due to my work, but.
Okay. Um, so can, you guys want to schedule it for Wednesday or?
I'm available Wednesday, Wednesday through Saturday, the next week.
Okay, we can do it when I get back. Why don't we schedule it? Thursday, the.
Did you save the turkey for Thanksgiving?
No, these are, these are buddies, they come down through twice a day.
I didn't know if you were saving it for Thanksgiving.
No, no.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good size, that's a good sized tom.
What do you say, Thursday?
Kidding me, we're in the, like, the main zone for every spring, that's what they do on the side of our house.
Let's schedule it for Thursday, the ninth.
November ninth?
Yeah. Um, what time do you guys want? Nine?
It's good.
So, when we sent this letter out to the Maderos family, we sent, we CC natural heritage because it's the turtle habitat. And they may be acting on this. Did you get anything from natural heritage yet? Okay.
I think the turtle part is in the front where the wetlands are.
No, it's not that kind of, it's, it's a, yeah, it's an upland kind of turtle, right?
Excellent.
Yeah. Thursday, the ninth at nine AM.
Okay, got it, okay.
Nine AM?
Nine AM, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we want to address Mr. Hanud from Five Away Customs as well? He's here.
Yeah, sure.
All right, we'll skip over, we gotta take it out of order.
Motion to, uh, to take out order, nineteen forty County Street, Five Away Customs.
Are you presenting a plan tonight?
Motion to take nineteen forty, nineteen forty?
Nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty County Street, Five Away Customs, out of order.
Sure, that's fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you have copies?
Ah, yeah, there we go, we get three.
So, um, this is the one Five Away Customs where the work happened a year ago. Um, and we've been asking for notice of intent. And Greg Drake from Outback flagged the wetlands on site and they submitted this plan that he gave you guys to me. However, um, the wetlands to the south live in a hundred.
That's updated, Lisa. That's updated as of yesterday, he emailed that. Jason sent that out yesterday.
Or this morning.
No, he didn't send it out to me, no, um, let me see, just a second.
I'm, I'm, you keep asking for the NOI, but I'm out of the hundred-foot buffer zone, so I don't need an NOI. That's what Jason keeps sending to you, or you keep telling me I need an NOI.
No, he didn't include this wetland at all until you're bringing this to me now.
Right, he emailed them out to us either last night or this morning. So, where, here is the wetlands you asked for. The original plan, he had it off of the GIS. You sent it in the drawing last night. Yeah, so it was this morning, he updated it. So, here is the hundred-foot buffer zone here, I'm outside of it. I'm also, you were saying.
How come you're just outside? And how do you know the wetlands don't come up to here? Because actually, frankly, I think.
He's a licensed engineer. This is who you asked me to use, is who I use, is who they tell me.
So, I think we should do a site visit.
Is this been flagged?
Has this been flagged? No, this?
No, I'm not flagging somebody else's property. I can't do that, yeah, I'm not doing that.
So, this is.
He's caused me enough.
Right, but we can walk down this access road and look in here, but, and if there is a wetland within a hundred feet. It's an after-the-fact filing that he'd be doing if he did do a filing for the resurfacing.
It's just, it's funny, yeah, I'm just trying to pull the project out and pay the mortgage, insurance, taxes, high taxes in this town. And I need to be able to use the property to make a profit with it.
Will you allow using?
To turn, I'm not using it. I haven't brought on new tenants because I don't know what's going to happen. I was blocked off from the old entrance, I had to open up an entrance.
Who's that on this too, to get your access?
So, I have to really push storage over there because I don't know what's going to happen here, you know what I mean? It's costing me a lot of money.
So, on this?
I got a lot of.
Well, we're not doing, this is not public hearing, so this is just an informal discussion.
Oh, sure, so just in, in, in formal, is it informal discussion? In regards to what, this, this line boundary that you?
Yeah, I just feel like if the engineer, I should be.
He's responding to our enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I got the email from the other day that there was going to be an enforcement problem for this, so I just, I was trying to show that. I can't file an NOI because I'm out of the hundred-foot buffer zone. And you said it was stormwater, I'm under the size.
Well, no, 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 not stormwater locally, it's stormwater under DEP. And that's why when I responded, I responded with the DEP representative. Because, because you're, just like the other one, you're a commercial site. So, when you resurface, you have to upgrade your site to include stormwater management, like.
So, the law I have to violate says under.
That's local. That's, that's the local stormwater committee here.
Okay.
They have a thirty-five thousand square foot rule.
Yep.
This is because.
If I was in the, if I'm in the.
If you're in the resource.
Well, I'm out of it, so.
So, that would be your way of getting around that, is to stay just inside of it?
I, I am, I'm, I'm.
Okay, so if he's inside under your foot buffer.
Then he has to file an after-the-fact notice, notice of intent.
All right, so because he's out of the buffer zone.
Well, he's ever done it.
If he's not, then we have to do an NOI.
The, the, the Outback engineer did it, so they, it shows I am outside of the buffer zone.
So, we did.
So, is this the pipeline you have existing right now, this dotted line?
Yeah. So, the, the, the line that you see.
Yellow?
Uh, I, is yours highlighted?
Yeah.
This line here, I can bring over the big crankup, easy for you guys to see, it's much more detailed. But this line here, this is where we added on because we were, we were cut off our access out of our pipeline.
I remember.
So, I had to open this up to gain access to my.
Black side to get into.
To the shop side, so I got my customs coming out of here right now. I'd like to bring it back, so that's why I proposed, I'm out of the hundred-foot buffer zone to get a curb cut. I talked to Jim Aggie out in the building department. Um, and I'm just waiting for you guys to pass this so I can get with the site plan, but to bring my driveway here so I can get access back to my storage lock the way it was designed.
So, you opened this corner up? You're opening up anything back here?
No.
The last soil contains.
This was already existing, this all was existing. We, we brought, we pulled the grass up and put gravel down right here just so we could drive out and put, you know, storage on.
Yeah, yeah. This is the only, this is the only thing we need to see.
Yeah, good. That's it, yeah, I'm outside.
There's nothing going on back here, like no new surfacing back here?
No, I haven't touched any of the property, that's all that yet is.
All right, so we should look at it, I mean, based on, I can determine where the wetland edge is here. So, that was an old plan I had of Mr. Maderos', that's why I wanted to bring it to his attention.
You don't know what it looks like now.
I don't.
Nobody does.
Yeah, but they can.
Okay.
Even if the wetland is off-site, if the wetland, if, if I, if, if I can show without actually physically flagging it, show Outback with the edges and they can do the measurements, then we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the other thing is also too, you see it, but there's like a twelve-inch burn there.
Right, we talked about the drum.
Yeah, yeah.
Why does it go up there?
But that's.
Don't imagine that.
So, if you had to.
Yeah.
Could you bring this back to meet this line, to meet?
So, this is already, this is already gravel existing all three of them. This is all gravel, this is his gravel. Let me grab my big one.
Do you have what you have now overlaid on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on that, it shows it. So, this might be easy, yeah. All right, so here is the, here is what we did, this is what we've already had.
So, that's the.
So, there's one thirty-eight.
I mean, I know where.
Oh, yeah, no, I know exactly where it is, yeah.
There's one thirty-eight. This was the old entrance out that she had in. We had to drive over about a three-foot section. There was logs put here, so we couldn't exit out of there. So, I had to do this because I had tenants storing here that were basically blocked in the property. So, we opened this up back here. I didn't just go and stop doing this. I came down, I seen Jimmy in the building department. Uh, Lisa came out and seen what I had proposed. There's some gray here, what was seen. We had a bright pink line across the grass marked out, but there was a misunderstanding about what was going to happen, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I explained to Jim, and he weren't there to hear it, but that any work within a hundred feet would require.
Right.
Notice of intent.
Right.
Then there was work, there was piling of loom and.
Right, which we cleaned that up actually. At last, when we spoke back then, is that, that's what you were worried about, we got that out of the way, so.
Is this still, is this area right here?
This, so where the check-in line is.
Right, so just shy of the input.
Yeah.
Just lays it out so you can see what's happening. Yellow line?
Forest in yellow is where we, so where we've had.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
This is already existing gravel back here. You know, that's been there for years.
Yeah, yeah.
Your grandfather did on that?
This is the only thing I get. This right here, I'm doing any of this, this is all grandfathered in, this is all grandfathered in, and right here, so I'm outside of where it's.
So, as long as it's inside that line, even if you had to adjust it a few feet?
Yeah.
To manipulate that?
So, if I had to adjust, you, what are you saying? I'd have to just put like a three-foot section of grass right here? I don't, what would be the fix for that?
I'm just, I'm just saying, to keep it in the thought.
Right, no, no, I'm saying.
To not throw it out, to not like get it lost.
Yeah, no, because as you said, you had the engineer do it, now Lisa knows the area very well. So, as she said and as we can see, it's plainly very, very close to the buffer zone. So, obviously, it becomes a teeny bit nebulous when you get real close, right? So, I think that if we were to take, take a look at it, everybody, everybody's in concurrence that it is out, then fantastic. And if there is a little bit of, a little bit of discrepancy, then as Jay said, that maybe there's an openness to moving things a little bit right on that.
I understand. I just, like I said, I'm just trying to get the project done. It's been a year now, just want to wrap it up.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
Nineteen seventy-four. Uh, the shop is nineteen forty, this property is nineteen seventy-four.
I mean, with what you've got, it makes sense.
See, this is, this is two thousand, twenty-two, and this is twenty-three, same area. There's work done on that, you have to see.
Can I have a, can you look at this?
This is, this right here is what you're showing them, is this. That's what you're trying to say, right?
Can we look at this real quick?
No, that's down this path right here.
So, this, that yellow line?
Mm-hmm.
Is that yellow line right here? Is that the corner line question?
This is all been here for years. This is all here. We brought up here close to the street. This was original. This is all.
So, where is the, where is that yellow line in question?
It's in the grass right now. This is an old picture. It's not updated in the picture. We went, we went here.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So, this has been, this has been there for years.
Okay, that's the part that was grounded for heat, yeah, for years.
Right.
But the, the point is any new changes to surface.
Right.
Right, or two hundred feet of a river, but she has a river in the back.
Which I'm well out of that.
You're well out of that.
I'm far out of that, I think three hundred feet almost.
Um, what about a flood zone? Do you know?
What do you mean flood zone?
Are you in a flood zone? Is this site in a flood zone? I think it might be that.
I mean, this area here is only a few feet below the street, so I don't think I'm that low.
If it's going to flood, if it floods anywhere, it floods down.
Down, yeah, in my wetlands, down here.
Or it goes into the backside of Davis into the sewers.
Yeah, we need to see where the flood zone line is.
I don't know, right, the limit stops.
But we can look, I can look at that, and I can ask them. They should actually, usually they do. They show the flood zone, limit of flood zone.
Intimate stream, is this what you're talking about back there?
No, yeah, I know, isn't it?
No, no, Lisa, am I, would I be correct in saying that if we were to do a site?
Because the flood zone is jurisdictional, that's why.
Right, right, if we were to do a site visit?
Yeah.
Check it out, see where this, the buffer zone is very close to the area of work. If we're all in agreement that it is outside, then that'll be useful information for us. And if there is a question, then we'd be better informed, we can better go from there. Is that a reasonable, reasonable position for where we're at?
So, my question is, will losing, if you had to adjust that corner, would that stop your access driveway?
Um, no, because the, the existing driveway was still here. This, the existing driveway was still here, so that's what I'm saying. If I had to take off, are, were you talking like a three-foot section?
I'm just, I'm just thinking, worst, worst case.
What I'm saying is, this is the corner I did, so I'd be put like a three-foot patch of grass there.
But would that limit your access? I'm just saying, if that is your.
I mean, it would, it would be tighter of a turn, and it would be nice to not have to do that, but I could, I could manage if I had to.
I'm just trying to pick the worst to have all the pieces together to know how to make the corner.
Correct.
And to have an engineer maybe help you.
Yeah.
Have it more answers. I mean, so you really only talk about that corner?
That little one.
Depending on what we find when we take a walk, but. So, it really needs a site visit.
Yeah, so, I mean, who, who's to be able for a site visit?
I'll go.
When?
Yeah, so I can have, should I have the engineer there for that?
Um, sure, yeah.
Probably want to, just to see what he says and what he found and.
Yeah.
Because I'm not one side, actually, I'm just asking. Once that's done, like, determined that I won't be the NOI, I'm able to move forward with.
Right. If we determine.
Building department.
Yeah, as long as you're outside the flood zone, which flood zone is a resource, of course, it's bordering that center to flooding. And then you're outside of the buffer zone, then we don't have any jurisdiction.
Okay.
Are you?
And after five years, I've never seen a flood, but I don't know how that works, as you say.
That's good.
Yeah.
You have November ninth at nine on Maris Lane.
Do you want to do it then?
Ten o'clock.
Do it next month?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, okay, Wednesday's the holiday that is, usually, traditionally, November eleventh.
I don't want to think of that.
So, I'm always close to November tenth.
Yeah, it's being observed that Thursday.
The November tenth is actually when it's observed for Veterans Day.
Oh. Now that you might mess up with my dates.
You said November ninth.
Okay, November ninth is.
At ten.
Oh, okay, November ninth is a Wednesday. There was Thursday for your last one.
Oh, yeah, Thursday, nine, nine.
I said nine, nine, I'd said ten, eleven, nine, okay, it is. Thursday is for that.
Oh, yes, that's.
We're always close.
That's Veterans Day, it's observed that day.
Observed. Veterans Day usually doesn't fall on Friday.
It's a Saturday.
All right, so let's do the, um, that's my first week back. Do you want to do the eight?
Wait, you get, you get Maris Lane on the ninth.
I gotta call them. It's observed holiday, I'm not coming in, I'm not supposed to come in.
On the ninth?
She said she could do Wednesday.
That's, she just told us, because the tenth is, that is, um.
Well, she said she could do Wednesday, so it's, that's.
Yeah.
Let's do Wednesday.
Yep.
So, let's eat.
And it'll be at ten o'clock. Maris Lane, uh, nine.
I think we could do Maris Lane, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll do it.
Okay.
Eleven.
It's very close.
It's nice when we get.
So, you might have to have one little island.
Do you want a, do you want a motion?
I don't mind that, I don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion for that?
Uh, no, I don't think we need one to discuss it, say, we're just going to have a site visit and.
Works for me. So, if there's perhaps a site visit, we sign off and we'll go forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I could sign up in the building permit, is there one in there right now?
Yeah, so I've been, I thought I had to clear this, when you were recording, I was speaking to Carrie earlier, she said I could go ahead, and Harry, when that's done, and as soon as I get approval from you guys, Jimmy, can you get with me, so I can get the, uh.
So that's November eighth at ten AM.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, Joe.
You're welcome.
Uh, do you want, need this picture?
That's hers.
You can have it.
You guys want to keep those copies or?
Yeah, I can.
Sure, sure, mine, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, let's see.
I think now we can go back in order.
I need one for the trial, do you have an extra one?
Tony, you just interested, uh, maybe you, uh, gave us something else?
I believe you got the email.
I just thought, to the technology, I could clarify, on that piece of property, you were just talking about layering, or plating.
Sure it was forty, I said it was fifty.
I was thinking more seventy.
I'm older than that.
Only by a day, Tony.
I emailed you today.
Yeah, you sent me one, but this one is the one that's been going on. So you sent that on the eighteenth.
Okay, well, let's go back this.
I have a couple of files today.
Yeah, total five.
Moving on.
You don't have it on four, I should know if you don't have it on four.
I don't have it, I know I don't have it, stop for now. Are you sure? No, it's just to you.
I don't, I see my email with all names, I put.
I was, it's all right, I'm, I'm.
Okay, all right. Lisa's getting late.
I know, I'm half past bedtime.
Okay, uh, zero Horton Street Enforcement Department.
You're gonna give me one of those?
Yeah, we got a plan right here.
You don't want it?
You're gonna have it when we go there.
Okay.
And here's, here's one here.
You're good?
I only need one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, what are you here for? Uh, Mr. Fumenza? We should be a Mr. Fumenza.
Yeah.
What do you have to say tonight?
Um, I, well, you want me to speak to her?
Yeah.
Where, where, where are you here, so I can take?
I'm, I'm, I'm at the bottom middle of the list.
Yeah, but we wanna take you out of order, because you're not gonna sit there.
You're gonna cut the whole line?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, where Lisa?
Wait, the last item.
Two oh nine seven Wheeler.
Oh, okay, uh, is there a motion to take, uh, twenty ninety-seven Wheeler out of order?
Motion to take two zero nine seven Wheeler Street out of order.
Is there a second?
Second, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're on.
How you doing, Mr. Fumenza?
Good, how about you guys?
We're all right.
And Lisa, how are you?
All right.
Jack, how are you doing?
Good.
So the reason why I decided to come today is I did speak to, uh, council in the one-hour advisement session, and the reason why I'm here is, I wanna see if I can, of course, mitigate the cost of a lawyer, because it's three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And because I feel I'm a citizen of this town, that I can work with you guys and not have expenses due to something that I never started myself. So what I do know is that my property has never been delineated as, as wetlands. Officially, it's never been delineated, it's on the mass G I S, it's not labeled as a wetland.
We don't wanna look at that.
So, from what I understand, and the other issue is, my property does not have any prior violations. So, with those two things in mind, the reason why you guys were gonna go onto my lot was to make a site visit. David was at my lot with Lisa, he, he made a proposal to do a fifty-foot, um, buffer zone where I could build my shed. Now, when I started this whole process, I said I wanted, all I wanted to do was build a shed. I don't wanna get lawyers involved, and Jack was complaining that people were coming to this commission, I don't wanna blame this commission for anything of, about the permitting process or the, the, the lapses that exist interdepartmentally, that's not my purpose here, all I wanna do is build a shed. But I don't wanna spend five thousand dollars on a lawyer, two thousand dollars on a scientist, when this all initiated from some lapse in the, in this process here, not with you guys, planning, building department.
Sorry, I have to sign in at some point.
Okay, so, that's what I'm here for, is, if I get, if I'm gonna pay thousands of dollars for a lawyer, and of course, what, what do lawyers want, they want hours, what do lawyers want, they wanna get other people involved in this situation and expose similar situations like this that have been going on for years in this town, so that's not what I'm here for, I know I just said that in me, but all I wanna do is, what Mr. Phillips said, he often, on his site visit, why don't you allow the, the shed to be built fifty feet? My proposal is, simple for all of us, is twenty-five-foot buffer zone, put riprap, three feet wide, I spoke to a contractor, Nick Skitsby, three-foot wide riprap around the edge of the property, and then fifty feet, I can build my shed. Easy. Now, if you wanna do all the other stuff, it's gonna cost me thousands of dollars for something that I never initiated, and who is anybody in this planet to say where the line is that I'm gonna go back, is it here, is it where my fire pit is, is it over there where my house is? Where is that line that you draw to determine where my, where my financial peril is in, in this matter? And that's why I'm coming here to get your help and guide me as your fellow citizen of this town to get help on. I don't wanna spend money on a lawyer, that property, whatever it is, we don't know, because it's not delineated by anybody, nobody has deline- Lisa made a visual inspection of the land, she saw some indicators that it was, that it was wetlands. Okay, you declared a wetland, what are you gonna do with the buffer zone with the guy, my next-door neighbor, are you gonna say that his pool, whi- which is within how many feet of, of my land, is now in wetlands too, his shed? You have to have what, a fifty-feet or a hundred-foot buffer zone, you're gonna open up a can of worms with, with whatever is next door to you, cause you're gonna declare that that is a wetland, without it being delineated, so that's why I'm here, I want help. Before I make the decision to go legal, if I'm gonna pay thousands of dollars for a lawyer, well, I'm gonna get something out of it, and that's, that's what I wanna say, so I want help, or then I will, you can guide me in the way that you want, or we can go legal, which I don't even know how much it's gonna cost, this guy wants three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Did I cause this? No. So what do we do? What, what do you do to mitigate my peril in this? I had nothing to do with the building of this property.
Well, I can say one thing, so there are a lot of things done, posts in history that are in wetlands now. Paul's house would never be able to be built today, not even close. If it's in a wetland. So there are laws to protect things that were done in the past, whether the past was soon, recent, or far back. I think whatever happened to your property happened, that's neither here nor there.
But he's proposing something new now.
So you're proposing something new, and this commission's job is to stand behind the laws of the state of Massachusetts for the conservation, and we have to follow those laws, we can't break that oath we took to take this position.
Okay.
If your house was built in a wetland, we're not gonna take it away, we're not gonna do anything.
We're not complaining about your neighbor's pool, neighbor's shed, it's to move forward, we legally cannot do anything but follow the law.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
That's our only job.
So what?
Lisa mentioned the law, which is.
Well, we have several laws, we have the local bylaw, and then we have the Wetlands Protection Act.
Mm-hmm.
So, what we typically do is require anyone in this situation to hire a wetland scientist, work with a wetland scientist.
How much is he per hour, do you know?
It depends on who you, it depend, hundred dollars an hour.
Okay.
Um, so.
They would flag the wetland for you.
So, they could flag.
Any, is that what you mean by that?
Yep, they could provide you a sketch, you could file a notice of intent for your shed, and.
Is that a Mass DEP Form One, cause the, I was told that I had to fill out a Mass DEP Form One?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as you said, you mentioned being within, as close as fifty feet is what you mentioned, well, we do have a fifty-foot no-build zone, then in that zone, between the fifty-foot and the hundred-foot zone, in that, in that buffer zone, under certain circumstances, things can be screwed, under, under certain circumstances, subject to certain conditions, but.
Actually, notice of intent is Form Three, I lied.
But there would have to be flagging.
Form One, I believe, is an RDA, so you may be able to get away with it as an RDA, sorry to interrupt.
Well, there, I was, I was counseled that I needed to fo- fill out a form, uh, uh, Mass DEP for one, Form One.
So that would be a, a request for determination of applicability, which that's, that's almost like step zero in a way, in a way that, that's asking, formally asking if the Wetland Protection Act, the local bylaw, is applicable to your situation, so that's basically the official, let, let me know if my project is in the jurisdiction area. So that would be the first step in determining whether or not it is, if we give you a negative determination.
But we already know that it, he doesn't, he doesn't wanna move his shed out a hundred feet, it would be on top of his house.
Right, that, that.
Yeah.
There's, but, there's nothing to say that you can't build it a hu- a fifty feet from the wet.
Well, that's what I just asked for.
That's why you need to flag the, have the wetlands flagged, then you can position or put a request in to position your shed after the fact, after that.
And then we look at the flagging, and if it meets the approvals of the laws that we follow.
Yep.
But, but we also.
So the no-builds all.
But I think we also need to look at the fact that there was, there was disturbance in the back.
There was, there was fill, like I explained in the last meeting, due to the grade, and the fact that the land that was there, plus the fill, was pushed back because it was up against the, the height of my foundation, this was the, the height of the land on the back wall, and my, and my stairs to my, um, to my deck were here, and the, the, the land, he never finished the grade, so that was the, it was an ongoing project. Because of COVID going on, I, it, the, e- even the occupancy permit was approved, there was no lawn, is that normal to approve? I had no lawn.
Right, so, so, Mr. Fumenza.
Is that, is that normal to?
If you were to, if you were to move forward with a wetland scientist, it's gonna do your flagging, they may also be able to, you know, when you show them where you want it, and it's, it sounds like it's gonna be in the, around fifty feet, it's just. They may be able to help you determine if there's some, um, you know, some restorative planting, or some kind of restorative action might be appropriate, they might be able to say, you know, you can plant some X, Y, Z plants over here.
Yeah.
And kind of help you come up with some recommendations that might mitigate a little bit, because there's give and take, right, there's, there's give and take if you wanna be within the buffer zone.
Jason is being like literal to the law that has to be, like, he's making it sound like it has to be by the foot.
Oh, no, we have.
Well, the law states that there is a, an eligibility.
Yes.
I understand, but that law wasn't followed from the inception of the project.
So, well, we could go back a hundred years, and there's been so many laws that, whether it was yesterday, we're not here to, to talk that.
The law does not require.
Well, that's why you get lawyers involved when.
Mr. Fumenza, the law does not require you to be outside of a hundred feet, there's, there's a buffer zone of a hundred feet, where it falls under the, the jurisdiction of the conservation.
So you have to try to avoid wetland impacts, if you can't, in this case, it's within a, your whole site's within a hundred, then you minimize, and then otherwise, you mitigate, but in your case, you can minimize and mitigate, and I think we could get to someplace, if we could work with a good wetland scientist that you would hire, we work with them all the time, we have, I, I have a, I mean, number one, number of them we work with, but, um.
Right, if you're beyond a hundred feet, then you don't have to worry about us at all, but if you're within fifty to a hundred, that doesn't mean nothing can happen, that doesn't mean that there's no activity at all that's permitted, it just means that.
We regulate.
Ex- exactly, so we have a duty to regulate it, and that's, that's part of our duty to uphold the law, is that we can allow actions to take place, but we have to make sure that there are mitigations, and that there are restorations, and, you know, when, when all impact can't be mitigated, we wanna make sure that there's things that can kind of restore the wetland, in the event that there are things that are gonna impact it.
There's gonna be erosion controls and sort, you know, temporary, and then we'll try to figure out some permits.
Contractor who came to me was very familiar, cause he does this, he's a.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of them in this, especially in this town.
So maybe I could work directly with him, but I mean, you sh- you really should have someone, unless you just wanna call the edge of trees a wetland, it's up to you, we could do that.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I'm, even then, that would be easy for all of us, why don't you determine that by looking, you had mentioned.
It's not our job to determine the wetland for you. Okay, that's not, that's not our job.
Scientist needs to get involved to work off of that line.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we can make whatever action.
We'll work with them.
I would be willing to wager that hiring a wetland scientist and going through that route, it's gonna, one, not only, in my opinion, is ultimately probably gonna cost less than going for, through a lawyer.
So then after I get.
Much less.
It's, not only will it cost less, but if it's a reasonable plan, and there's reasonable mitigations, and there's reasonable controls, and there's reasonable restoration, there's a reasonable chance that it ends with a shed.
Cause I also have things that are already built, unbeknownst to me, that are already probably in violation of the no-build zone, so what do you do with that?
Well, if there are sheds, maybe you, you, if there were small sheds, you could maybe move them.
I'm talking about landscaping, I, I built a fire pit, there's a fire pit with landscaping, so.
I mean, let's, let's just, let's just worry about the shed.
But, so we are going to go there, and I already went there, and I know there are issues, that's why I'm saying, and I tried to ask you from the beginning if maybe we could work on.
Well, you also mentioned you have very limited resources, yeah, I know you said you'd work with me, but with all due respect, you, you, you did quite clearly state you have limited resources, so I'm, I'm being, I'm being pressured in many directions, I was enlightened by that gentleman there who said, well, why don't we go fifty feet? And see, that was a, a glimmer of hope, because that sounded easy.
Yeah, yeah.
You cannot build within twenty-five feet, that's no touch, no touch completely.
We'd like to reestablish our twenty-five feet where possible.
Fifty feet is the no-build, so, so if you, you have the wetland flagged, and then you go, go beyond the fifty feet, you're, you know, you just, uh, petition us, and what we would do is say, okay, but here's what you must do to protect the land on this side of it, uh, but we're not gonna say, no, you can't do it, but you can do it with protection for the wetlands, that's why we have a hundred-foot zone.
Yep, yep, I, I understand that, and the other thing I, that I didn't understand was the comment that you made, that you said that I inherit the problems of the plant, of the, of the land, so I bought it from the builder.
Yeah.
So, from what I understand, in the, in the, in the nineteen ninety-six case, where they enforced that, the nineteen ninety-six case of the, of Norton Conservation versus Texera, the, the problem with that case was that there were known prior violations, now, my property has no known prior violations, so that puts it in a whole new nuance, that hasn't been tested really to, at that level.
Wetland fill carries on, there's no statute of limitations, so if it had just been cutting that was made on your property illegally, and it was sold to you, you wouldn't inherit that problem, but you inherited a fill situation of a wetland, but I'm not saying we are going to make you tear your hu- we, we all agree, we're not gonna make you tear your house up.
But the, the, the fill factor, that was not a known violation prior to the purchase of the.
How do you know?
Well, you would know.
It wasn't known by us.
You would know, your records would indicate that twenty ninety-seven has a known violation.
I don't know if the builder knew, maybe the builder knew, I, I, we didn't know, actually, this commission as a whole, we, I don't have any records that anyone.
Right, and you had mentioned in the last meeting verbal, which was kind of.
I will say, you definitely had a wetland there, and you said it, you said it as well.
It, it was wet, yeah, but doesn't, just because I say it's wet, doesn't mean it's a. Well, I, I, it, it was wet, yeah, but doesn't, just because I say it's wet, doesn't mean it's a wetland. Only a scientist can tell you that.
No, but you can see it on a near photo. I do a lot of interpretation of those things and you can tell.
Now, does hypothetically speculating, who knew what?
But Mr. Remos, she told me onsite, Lisa, you told me onsite, you looked at my, you looked at the place where I wanted to put my shed. I told you, I wanna put it in the same line as my neighbor's shed. And you said that, that, you, that you, that you thought that that shed was probably in wetlands too. You said that.
No, 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 no. I said it might have been in our jurisdiction, but I'm not gonna go walk on their property. We're not here for his property.
But you told me. Right, you told me that you, from your observing of it, you told me that you thought it was. Then in the meeting, you, you retracted that and said, and you, you later than said, I'm not convinced. Well, the only way to be convinced is by doing a site visit, so.
Do you wanna make a full complaint right now? Cause then now I need to go, now I need to add it to my list.
No, that's not what I'm here for, but I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, to characterize what you told me. You, you told me.
Wetlands, just a fundamental, so what was not a wetland five years ago could be one today. So rather than hypothetically speculate on things.
That's what I mean. Well, that was a speculation on her part. She was saying that the, the, the neighbor's shed was, was probably in, 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 in a wetland. She made a hypothetical.
No.
She rep- she's representing the commission. She made a hypothetical.
I said it could, it could be. I mean, I'm not perfect. I, I'm honestly.
You're not.
All right, we're, we're, we're heading totally in the wrong direction.
I know, we are.
We want to look at what you can do, not what someone else put a shed five, ten years ago. Whatever, whatever was said, it's, tha- that's mute. What we're gonna do is have you in, in, uh, I'm gonna say this, you should get a wetland scientist, have him mark the wetlands on your property.
Go ahead.
Don't worry about your neighbors, because that's like, that's like, that's like your house. It's there, it's there.
I'm not worried about my neighbors. I'm not.
You're grandfathered in.
You, you, what's gonna happen is if he defines the wetlands, then you can determine where you can put your shed. End of story.
Okay, so step one, what, what do you recommend I do?
Get a wetland scientist and have him find, mark the wetlands for you.
Okay, so you, you guys don't even need a site visit, cause all I need to do is hire a wetland scientist.
Well, we'll do a site visit once you submit a plan to us.
And then, then after that, we, we.
Right, I know that.
Yep, so, so you'll hire a wetland scientist, they'll flag it, you'll file an N O I, you can submit a plan for what you wanna do. If there's a question about the wetland boundary, we wanna just kinda see it, visually confirm it, ask some questions, we may come to a site visit, and then.
So if I don't hire a lawyer, is there somebody on either Lisa or anybody here who can help me fill out this, this Form one, which I, it looked pretty daunting on the thing. I know.
No, he's gonna have, that lawyer's got three hundred and fifty dollars will do it for you and charge you two, three hours' work.
Yeah, right.
I'm, no, I'm serious. Or he's gonna tell you to get a wetland scientist, what we're telling you.
That's what I was, my next comment was, even if you go the law route to try to get your way, he's gonna have to get some evidence of where you stand. So no matter what, your first step is to take that, that, uh, wetland scientist and see where you stand.
Right, so it's not even, so what you're saying is it's not even, it's not even beneficial at this point to pay a retainer to a lawyer until I first get a wetland scientist. Is that what you're saying?
Get a wetland science, bring it to, bring it to.
I would think you're on the right path.
And he'll probably tell you what you can and can't do. He'll probably do it, uh, a little charge of your three fifty.
Right.
Nine times out of ten, the lawyers come to the wetland scientists, cause they know nothing about wetlands rules.
So that's like a given. You just gotta get it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you guys are, are doing, but I still feel like I got the fuzzy end of the lollipop on this one. And it's.
It's gonna help you. I've never heard that.
Oh, it's from, it's from the movie Some Like It Hot. You're too young, you probably don't know.
Yes, so, before my time.
Marilyn Monroe was in the movie. Tony Curtis.
Okay, I, I think we're all set then. You're gonna, you're gonna have to get a wetland scientist. He's gonna determine where your lines are. He'll, he'll, he'll produce a map, maybe like this for you, and then he'll say.
Sketch, just, we'll accept the sketch. For this, we'll accept the sketch. It doesn't have to be an exact survey plan. So that should save you some time. That's, it's gonna be a shed.
You mean the, the cost of a survey?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. You, you won't need something as in-depth as.
You can't use a previous survey?
No, cause we have to delineate the wetland.
Well, the wetland scientists show them and they can use that to drew their sketch, but.
Okay, on the, on the map, they can, they can sketch on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and keep us in the loop. So we know it's, every month I report to them, and that's why Maureen invited you.
Lisa, you, you advised that I shouldn't do anything, like you were concerned about erosion, so right now, so if I do nothing now, it's, it's your, your concern of erosion, wh- how, how long does this process?
Could it get any worse?
Yes.
There's no grass there right now.
Well, yeah, there's lots of weeds, but, yeah, the weeds are probably.
Okay, they're, they're holding something in.
Yeah, and the wetland scientist you hire is gonna really, is really gonna give you all the qualified insight that you're gonna.
They're gonna educate you on what you got.
Right.
Outside the realm of this conversation now, I hope, from seeing the rest of this meeting that I went home and saw, where you spent a lot of time on trying to delineate a bylaw, I really hope that, that you guys in the town, not the commission here, I'm not holding the commission, but it's really sad that by watching those minutes that you, that you guys are involved in the middle of something, which is, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's really kind of like a farce when you see that the laws are not being followed because of procedures, and that's really disappointing. And I hope that, based on what you said, Mr., um, digits, that, that you were impressing upon Mr. Hull?
We got somewhere at the last selectman's, we got somewhere at the last selectman's meeting that I hope will solve or prevent these problems in the future.
That's exact, if, if anything that's good about this, that's the good thing, because I still do not feel good at this point, because it's gonna cost me, I know it's gonna cost me money and that.
It, it, it is, but we are recommending you get the wetland scientist, uh, and you don't need anybody else. I, I won't, I don't think so.
That's it. That's gonna be your last big bill, and it's, that's it. Not even big.
Well, I appreciate the time.
We're here to help people to prevent problems, to help people and help their neighbors from.
Yeah.
You know, and you saw earlier how we try to deal with that.
I was watching the, 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 the meeting earlier at home, yes.
And we do it for free.
And I was really disappointed for Jack at the last meeting, cause I really, cause he was really upset, and I wanted to tell him, you know.
No, it's, it's not, no, I know, but what I'm saying.
I'm blaming you guys.
I've spent my life, I've spent my life in this town. Seventy-three years, I've lived in two houses. One I can see from my house, which is approximately two hundred feet up the road. Okay, and years ago, when I was younger, there was more people working at Raytheon Corporation over in North Dayton, three thousand and some people, which was more than the people that lived in town.
Right, I remember that.
I go through the whole area, your road.
Wheeler?
Was impassable.
Yeah, it was a dirt road.
Up by, up by that young lady up there, right by her house, in the fall.
Maureen, is that Maureen?
Uh.
No.
No, okay, I'm sorry.
Right up by her house.
I didn't know all these people. I know Paul.
The town, the town used to dump dirt across the road. You couldn't go up the road and you couldn't go down Oak Street. That whole thing was shut off, because it was impassable. Your road was impassable.
Yep.
Um, nobody came in past the corner, a wheeler and walker.
Yep, the lady, the old lady who moved from there, she told me about the history. She used to work for.
Yeah, there used to be a toboggan site up on, on the thing, yeah. You used to go tobogganing, but people come in.
Well, anyways, I felt bad that I didn't tell you that.
People come in.
We're not mad at you in the commission. It's, it's the process that, that, that kept failing. That's what.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't have control.
Hopefully, we'll get that process all squared away, and I would like to move on, so that we can, uh, get home. And that poor young lady back there, her eyes are closing, uh.
Well, your last meeting ended at ten o'clock, so you're, you're still early.
Okay, all right, let's go to, uh, Zero Horton Street.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Take care. Be well.
I need to talk now. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Uh, Zero Horton Street, map for ten.
Lot, this, lot fifty-three. Um, they did the minute, the, uh, planting out there and I requested a monitoring report from Goddard Consulting. I received a report. Um, and the reports will continue for two years. That's where that's at. Next.
Yep.
Two, three, seven, one County Street, map twenty, lot sixty-five. Um, enforcement order was issued in twenty-one. Uh, warning letter was issued, um, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, requesting a satisfactory pla- plan by nine twenty-two, twenty-three. Daily fines began on nine twenty-two, twenty-three, and we continue to write weekly fines.
Okay, now Lisa, these fines, are they being, uh, sent into the assessors' office as well, so that, uh, they know that?
Not the assessors' office. The town clerk gets a copy.
Okay, all right, so, so at the, the property goes to get sold, uh.
Wow, we need to look into that.
These are currently not leanable, as the town has not, at least I, I've requested from the town clerk and I received a copy of all the local options that we've adopted. And I believe, I, I might misquote the M G L chapter and section, but I believe that it is chapter forty, section fifty-eight, which is the local option to allow municipal li- uh, municipal charges and fines to be leaned to property taxes. While we did accept that, that option, per the M G L, the town must by special or annual town meeting vote adopt each specific charge, which is to be leaned in such a manner. We've adopted them in the past for things like sewer liens, title-five liens, demolition liens, et cetera. From what we found at the town clerk's office through the research, it does not appear that the town ever voted to authorize conservation charges to be leaned. So that would have to be added in a town meeting at some point.
Okay.
I think that's important.
Yeah, guys, make it happen. That's something you guys do.
Okay, so that has to, uh, we have to vote on it to request the selectman to put on the town warrant?
Yeah.
Yep, the special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, I would say that have to go on the warrant.
Would you prepare something like that for us?
I, what I'll have to do is, it, this would be for June, because the special town meeting warrant is closed, but that's more than enough time, so what I can do is reach out to a couple of other communities that have adopted it, request some sample language, and then I'm sure I can put something together.
Okay, very good.
I'll present it to the, uh, to the commission sometime over the winter.
Very good, wonderful. Okay, Lisa, continue. Uh, Williams Street?
Uh, ten thirty-five Williams Street. So I know we talked about, um, enforcement action, and you guys wanted me to write an enforcement order. I have Maureen now, and she's really helpful, but she's been working on a timeline so that once I have the timeline all set, I can draft the enforcement order, and I hope to have that for you soon. I ca- I'm sorry, I feel like I've been dragging along on this, but, um, there's a lot going on, so.
Okay.
Um.
Lumina.
What? Sorry. Oh, Zero Horton Street, map seven, lot twenty-six. Um, that one, um, I received an email today. I'll read the email as part of the record. Let me just get in there. Here we go.
Okay, that's, um.
From Mr. Schmeele. Um, please see the status update for Zero Horton. We are still working to fully understand the limitations on site. So we do have a restoration plan, but they're trying to figure out what he can do going forward, as he wants.
Is this near the church, or is this near Smith's? Okay.
Where he wants to have animals there, okay? Limitations on site as it dictates the extent of restoration, i.e. leave road in, take road out. Building has confirmed, building department has confirmed, no structure over a hundred and twenty square feet would be permitted as there is no primary development residence. And National Grid is still working on a response, which he should have early next week. Number one, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, draft plan provided to Concom. Applicants represented requested site review with Concom agent to evaluate site conditions and propose mitigation strategy. Number two, September twenty-seventh, onsite review of impacted locations and restoration replication plan with Dayton Concom agent. Concom recommended the applicant confirm future plans comply with Dayton Building and Health Department requirements, noting justification for the road is likely to be required to ensure wetland fill is a reasonable request and has purpose. Number three, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting with Zenith and Dayton Building Department. That was his meeting, he had, not me. Department indicated accessory structure may not be permitted on site with no primary structure, due to not having a toilet, I believe. Okay, um, National Grid would limit activity within the electric overhead utility easement and the health department would have strict ra- requirements for animals on site without a primary residence. Animal shelter might be acceptable under a hundred and twenty square feet in size, but coordination with the Health Department and National Grid is required to confirm. Number four, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, meeting with National Grid Land Department. Initial feedback is that no structure would be permitted under overhead lines. Uh, however, additional review will be required by National Grid Real Estate Group. National Grid expects to have a response the week of October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. So we're making good progress on this. Um, I'll update you guys as it happens. I'll try to remember to forward all the emails.
Okay.
That's Stephen Schmeele, the wetland scientist. He's working hard on that one.
That's on, that's at, uh, near the church?
Yes.
Okay, Williams Street, Zero.
Map twenty-one, lot forty, thirty-four dash two, notice of violation. Um, so they are, it, the ball's in their court. We're waiting, um, an approvable plan and a notice of intent for a possible home. Nineteen forty, we already discussed with Mr. Hanud. Eight eighty, um, notice of violation, um, was sent at the beginning of the year. Um, they got a wetland delineation. They're allowing the area to regrow. Dave and I took, um, a little walk over there, and it is re-establishing, just slow, so I need to follow up in the spring, see how it's doing. They are shoring some firewood in there, and that doesn't bother me. It's on an existing car path. Um, fourteen twenty, Williams Street, we asked Mr., um, Arujal for a response. He hasn't responded. We don't have an update. Nine eighty-one, Stonegate Landing. The tree has been flush cut. The owner sent photos. The, um, shed has been removed. Conservation Steve Mix has been planted, and I will follow up in the spring. I have photos of all that. So this can actually get taken off for next meeting, and eight eighty can get taken off as well. Forty-five Tremont Street. So there is an email, there's an email chain. Mr. Schmeele, the wetland scientist, is involved with this one as well. Let me find that one.
You said Tremont Street, Schmeele?
Yep, um, so he atta- he sent me a sketch from his initial review, but he's planning to conduct a follow-up inspection. He flagged wetlands. Um, he wants to confirm the impacts and distances, but, um, in a nutshell, the, some of the clearing has been done within our jurisdiction. Um.
And there's a good rainstorm, there's, uh, flow, there is water for several days on the, on the side.
Cause all the trees are gone, yeah. Um, and the mi- owner has been diligent. He really has been very diligent with working, J Alps, working with Natural Heritage to provide them with the information they're looking for. So he is filing with them for the disturbance. Um, but I can show you guys all the sketch if you wanna see it. Um, this is just a sketch from Steven. So, the flatlands at the south end of the property, and this is all the disturbance area. So, it's a good sketch.
Just go ahead.
Yeah, I can see it from the road.
Yeah.
I know where it is. I can see it from the road, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, Steven, Steven did a good sec- sketch there. So anyways, that's a work. Yeah, but, uh, Stephen, Stephen did a good sec- sketch there, so anyways, that's a work in progress, I'm happy that things are progressing with figuring that one out. Um, ten thirty-three Oak, um, jeez, I'm forgetting the owner's name.
Cook.
Cook, Seth Cook.
Yep.
So, he was here at the last meeting, and since then, he hired a lawyer, the lawyer is, um, telling him to file a notice of intent, um, so, as of today, I got an update from the lawyer that Mr. Cook has reached out to some companies, and he's waiting for some proposals.
For what?
For filing a notice of intent, so it'll be an after-the-fact notice of intent, similar to, uh, Mr. Pimental's, um, but we would be requiring, I would hope, some mitigation for the fact that it was built in our fifty-foot no-bill.
That's one, the, the corner of it was in the no-bill, right, is, am I thinking about that correct, is the big garage in the corner of it?
Oh, I think more than it.
Yeah, probably the back third, more back quarter.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 all right, thank you.
So, and we already discussed twenty ninety-seven Wheeler, oh, and last but not least, so, um, this is a letter that Paul found that is used by-
Rockport.
Rockport, I don't know if I have that copy, but, you guys have seen the letter, right?
It's the same one we've-
Yeah, I modified it, I gave a copy to the building department, I gave a copy to Mr. Paulin.
Hey, did you want me to read this into the record?
I had a, yep, I had a conversation with the building commissioner yesterday, and he said that permanently is going to figure out how to upload that, so that it either can get checked off or signed.
Excellent, um, Mr. Jim, are you okay if I read this into the record?
Sure can.
To accompany building permit application, the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and the Dayton Wetland Bylaw apply to many properties where wetland areas may not be obvious, so please read the following. Application procedures with the Conservation Commission are separate from application procedures with the building inspector. The Dayton Conservation Commission wishes to advise you that your proposed construction may be subject to review under the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, and the Dayton Wetland Protection Bylaw. If wetlands, see list of wetland resource areas listed below, are present within one hundred feet of the proposed work, or a river slash perennial stream is present within two hundred feet, an application must be filed at the Dayton Conservation Commission for the proposed work. Contact with the commission at this time may save considerable time, frustration, and expenses down the road. In general terms, the act and bylaw provide that anyone proposing to remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, discharge into, cut or remove vegetation, or otherwise alter any wetland, must first file a request for determination and/or a notice of intent permit application, including detailed plans with the local commission. The commission subsequently holds a public hearing on the activity. This is the law administered in all three hundred and fifty-one communities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Following this hearing and order of conditions, the permit defining the limit of work and any conditions may be issued if the project meets performance standards set forth in the Wetland Protection Act and bylaw. The purpose of any such condition is to ensure that negative impacts to the wetland resource area are avoided, and the assumed functions and values of the wetland resource area are preserved. The Wetlands Protection Act and Dayton Wetlands Bylaw and their regulations may be reviewed online, and application forms can be obtained from the Conservation Commission office. Copies of the act and bylaw can also be obtained at the town clerk's office. Anyone with questions about the laws and how they apply to their site or activity, and anyone in need of filing assistance can call the Conservation Commission office at seven, seven, four, eight, seven, two, zero, nine, four, six, and speak with the conservation agent, or via our website link at the town's website, conservationcommissiondytonma, dyton-hyphen ma dot gov. It is the responsibility of the applicant to find out if they are working in a wetland resource area or buffer zone, and to apply for and obtain any necessary wetland permits before doing work in these areas. It is not the commission's or building inspector's responsibility to notify you. The commission stands ready to help the public understand and comply with these laws. Also, please be aware that while excavation, grading, and vegetation clearing do not require a building permit, these activities do require a permit from the Conservation Commission if taking place one hundred feet from a wetland or two hundred feet from a river slash perennial stream. Unpermitted activities are subject to fines up to three hundred dollars per violation per day. Wetland resource areas include freshwater or coastal wetland, marshes, wet meadows, bogs, swamps, bernal pools, banks, reservoirs, lakes, ponds, quarry pits, rivers, streams, creeks, beaches, dunes, estuaries, the ocean, land underwater bodies, land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface water, land subject to tidal action, lands within one hundred feet of above-sighted resource areas, coastal storm flowage, or flooding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, Lisa, you still have to sign off on every permit within ten days, am I correct?
Uh, yes, so the, the, I'm being tagged on permits.
So, this is an additional notice that the people get?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna say, yes, you must, no, you must file, no, you don't, unsure, have it flagged?
Right, I put comments, yeah, on the permit.
Okay, and then this goes as a separate item to them when they get their building permit?
No, that goes, well, that, we're trying to get it on there before they even can apply.
Guys like a box where you go to buy an app on your phone, you have to, I agree, and I've read all this shit that no one does, and scroll through it, I agree.
Everybody needs it.
That's that piece of paper that they're gonna have to check the box to get to the next step, to allow the application out.
Okay, I, okay.
So, when they come up here and wanna complain or say anything, we slide the piece of paper back that says, "You checked and agreed, I apologize."
Yeah, you can't say we didn't warn you.
And that was very, very well done?
Yes.
Two ninety-seven Wheeler Street should've had this, should've gave them a copy of this.
Okay, uh, we should have copies of these as well, uh, just, just to have them available.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Uh, so that people can get them.
Well, they've made an option, we, uh, I was speaking with Lisa about also having a paper option for the people of the town that like paper.
Well, yeah, I like paper option.
But that's what it is, so there's gonna be a verification when you apply paper.
Okay.
Sign, agree, you've, we've handed you the literature, okay.
When is this gonna go on?
I don't know.
We have to-
We have to vote to put it on?
To be determined, I would like you to vote to adopt that.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's a good idea, yeah, good question.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to adopt, what are we gonna call this?
What are we adopting, the procedure, are we adopting a procedure or just a piece of paper?
This, I guess we're just be adopting, is it, was this an official distributable material of the Dayton Conservation Commission?
Yeah, yeah, official-
'Cause, 'cause we can't control the processes of other departments, however, this was adopted at a board of selectmen meeting, correct?
Oh, that was not adopted.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And we should give it to them, so they can adopt it, but-
Well, I did, I already did, so I hope it's okay with you guys before you vote.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the procedural, um-
Explanation.
Conservation, yeah, procedural explanation for Dayton Conservation jurisdiction?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're good to go on that, okay.
Great. Are we gonna mo- make a motion to adj- oh, I do have a question. Does anybody wanna go to the Fall Conference, 'cause I think you guys, someone should go.
I would love to, but it's, I think it's the twenty-fifth or sixth, right?
Yeah, it's one of my, away.
Yeah, my, my wife and daughter are going to Florida that week, the Lucky Ducks, and I'm home with my four-year-old boys.
You got a vacation?
You lucky duck.
I'm home with my twin boys.
Yeah, you got a vacation if they're going there, right?
Steve, just need a motion to adjourn, unless there's any discussion?
Motion, motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.